We're good. All right. So I'm Travis Snell. I'm going to be the acting chair of tonight's zoning board, select board meeting. Excuse me. Right. I'd like to call the ordering, the meeting to order for Tuesday, September 13th. And we have an agenda tonight that we can briefly go through, but we'll have community input first. But I think before I do that, it doesn't say on here, but I need to call the meeting to order and do a roll call vote for the meeting. So it looks like we have, and I'll, I'll just start with myself, Travis Snell, present and Kate.
Kate Reed, present.
Okay. And then remotely, do we have?
Barney Arnold, present.
All right. Fantastic. Well, with three members, we do have a quorum. And Nathan should be joining us via. Okay, perfect. Hello, Nathan.
Hello.
We're calling the meeting to order. I just wanted to have you acknowledge that, that you are present, please.
I am here.
All right, great. So I'm called a meeting to order. And the first item on the agenda is community input. I do not see any community input tonight's or from in the public, but I will say that the meeting is being recorded on Zoom and I would ask if anyone else in the audience is recording to please let us know pursuant to mass general law. Seeing none. Okay, yeah, I'm sorry. Is there any input from anyone on the Zoom who is attending remotely? Who for a public input on any of the items we're going to be covering tonight or anything else? All right, seeing none and hearing none will move on. The first item on the agenda is to close the hearing that was opened on seven thirteen twenty-two, an executive session pursuant to mass general laws thirty-nine twenty-three B dash two. This matter has been settled, so we'd like to officially close that hearing if we haven't already. So I can I have a motion to close the hearing, please?
Can I just interrupt you for a second?
You can, please.
Normally, we read the entire agenda.
Okay.
So that people know what's coming up.
Okay.
And in what order.
That sounds good. Let's, let's finish this item and then I'll go through all of them and we'll, we'll keep going. But thank you, Kate. That's helpful.
This is number.
This is.
I moved that the select board closed the hearing opened on July thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, an executive session. What wasn't open in executive session pursuant to master law, chapter thirty-nine, section twenty-three, B paragraph two, as the matter has been settled.
Second.
Okay, and we'll do a roll call vote in alphabetical order, please.
Arnold, I.
Brown, I.
Reed, I.
Snell, I. Okay. And in, in our meeting notes, David Modell is not present at this point. He will be joining us later. All right. So thank you, Kate. We will go through a quick rundown of the agenda. So tonight we will be covering the following. First, a public safety facility task force discussion and update, then a workshop on for the board chairs and members to discuss the open meeting law and ethics training. Then the select board will discuss its two thousand thirteen goals and review the plan for the action steps afterwards.
Also the twenty-three goals.
Correct. This year twenty twenty-three. Did I say twenty-two?
No, you said thirteen.
Oh, thirteen. Oh, my gosh. Yeah, that was, I'm sorry. All right. All right. I know. And then appointments and resignations will be going through. Ryan McLean will go, go through that list. And then the town administrators report from Ryan will work on the cemetery deeds and sign those and then any liaison reports and approval of the minutes and review of the warrants, even though I don't think there's any need to remove review warrants because we're not having a special town meeting. All right. So moving on now that we have the agenda. Let's start with the public safety facility task force. If you two would like to come forward and sit at a microphone and Barney, I think you're involved in this too. So if you want to, I don't know who's going to be leading the discussion, but you know, of the three of you, whoever, however you want to conduct this is fine.
Um, thank you for having us. We're, we're really glad to be able to report out at this point because it seems that things sort of just gelled. To give you a little background, what we wanted to do before we could make any recommendation to the select board was to go back and sort of put everything on the table and dismiss them by their own merits or their lack of merits and my buttons on my. And, and then move from there. So that included looking at the police station and the fire station on their own to see what structurally they had to offer, what their problems were. And then, and then at the same time, looking at possible locations, if neither of the, if both of those sites had to be replaced and we had to couldn't use either of those sites. So at this point, we feel like we've done all of our due diligence on that end. Actually, Kate Reed came to our meeting in August to share with us some, all of the available town owned spots in town that could potentially be used. We looked at a state location that could possibly be used. Steve Ledoux wrote to the state to ask them if that could, we could discuss with them about possibly using that site and they said no, but I think Kate's got a friend who's going to go back and ask the question a little differently. So possibly.
Need me to, okay.
Yeah. So we've looked at a lot of the, the locations in town. We've also looked at, not looked at in earnest, but considered some private home spaces in town to see if those are potential places that we, we want to look at. We have also on the other side of the ledger, we have asked Stu Roberts of Johnson Roberts Architects to come in. And they do public buildings for their, their business. So Stu is a former resident of Carlisle and a real friend and he went through the fire station with a fine tooth comb and did a program study there. He came out today to do the program study on the police station. And then we had an, an engineer come out and look at the police, the fire station, because we want to know, one, can we use it? Two, can we build on it? If we had to build on it and three, if we can't build on it, can it be used for something else? And so we're eagerly awaiting that report. We hope to have everything in hand for our meeting on September twenty-seventh. So with, at that point, we will begin as a, as a task force to sort of sift through what we've looked at to make the recommendation to the select board.
One, one thing that I would, I would add in looking at this state piece of property, one of the pieces of the puzzle. If we're doing something at the fire station that makes the fire station that puts it out of service for a period of time for construction, we need a temporary site. And the state property might be useful for that as well as other properties in town. So those are all parts of the puzzle.
I just wanted to interrupt and say, ask you both to introduce yourself too. And I didn't do that in case someone doesn't know who.
My name is Christine Layer and I'm the chair of this task force.
And I'm Jerry Lerman and I'm the vice chair. Or the chair of vice.
Thank you.
So I don't know, I, we don't, I've never done this before. We've never done this before. So we will start on the twenty-seventh to look at the pieces and I think then we'll be able to tell you when we would have something for you guys as a recommendation.
Okay. And from, oh, go ahead, Barney. I think.
I was just gonna ask Christine or Jerry and or Jerry. Would you be able now to talk a little bit about what Stu Roberts came back with in terms of a program study around the fire station?
Well, he, he didn't come back with a, like, he didn't come back with a, this is what you should do. He sort of came back with, this is the square footage that you would need. And the, it is a great question, Barney, because one, one of the things that the police station and I'm sure the fire station run into is a level of what their buildings have to qualify for to be accredited by the state of Massachusetts for each of their disciplines. And so I think we all know that the police station is, does not meet, meet that accreditation bar. But Stu Roberts, because of his firm's expertise, he was able to bring in all the pieces that we could possibly need to meet that accreditation. And one of the things at the, at the fire station that is the biggest change is that because buildings have changed so much in terms of their technology and the products that go into a, a residence is that the fumes that come out during a fire are so much more dangerous, not just at the fire, but what the firefighters bring home on their clothing and their uniforms. So they really have to have designated different levels of where you get washed off as you enter the building, where you store those clothes as you enter the building. And then literally to have two sections of the building where none of that will ever touch. So that if you have offices and if families have to wait in those spaces while their parent firefighters are out fighting a fire, those spaces are safe. So and that's, that's a pretty big thing. It's a lot of space and it's a lot of equipment and unfortunately a lot of expense.
And the one thing that was clear from Stu's report is that the amount of square feet that the fire department needs exceeds their current building.
Yes.
And did you get a report back from the engineer yet?
No.
No.
That's what we're really waiting.
Yes. So the engineer not only looked at the building itself, but also the, the property around the building. Should we have the opportunity or the need to expand that building up or out?
And one, one of the things that she talked about was the possibility of building a structure on top of the existing structure.
With its own, with its own foundation. So kind of independent, right?
But connected.
Right, right.
And they also would need more space for equipment bays. And that could be a separate building. That.
On site.
On site that would be connected. So as a separate building, it doesn't trigger the sprinkler requirements and other, other things.
That.
Creative.
Yes.
Thing we don't have is costs.
Yeah. Well, we do know that sprinklers cost a lot of money. So if we can save the price of the sprinkler right off the bat, we're doing pretty well.
And Jerry, could you, you, you said that what, one of the things Stu came back with was the square footage exceed that would be needed to be, to meet the accreditation requirements is greater than what currently exists. Is that what I heard you say?
Yes, yes.
So by how, how much greater was what he came, I mean, what's the difference between the two?
I don't have the numbers. Do you, do you have it on your computer, Christine?
I'm just curious of the magnitude.
Barney, my, my, my recollection is four to six times.
Woo, wow. Yeah. Okay.
The size of the current building.
Yeah.
But if you go in the fire station, guys, it's bays and two offices. I mean, it's nothing.
I'm.
Yeah, no, I've been in there. Yeah.
I've been in there and I've see how they have to take the bumper off of the ambulance just to get the ambulance in there. So.
Have that bumper bronzed at the end.
Well, I, I did want to ask because, you know, not only for my benefit, but maybe Ryan's and anyone else listening is can you just step back a second and remind us of, of kind of what you've been tasked with and how this just varies in a summary way, how, how, how this all got started and, you know, where were your goals?
Let you take that because you know where it gets started.
Well, we, we've been looking at the police station for a while in terms of satisfying the requirements of a police department for a town of five thousand plus individuals. It, it's clear that the police station doesn't meet the requirements of our existing police department. It became clear that the fire station had the same issue. And the question was, how do we solve that problem? Do we renovate those buildings? Do we build a combined facility somewhere else in town? Do we build two more buildings, two different sites in town? What, how do we go about solving those problems? And if we, if we build a new fire station, what do you do with the old fire station? If we build a new police station, what do we do with the old police station? So that's the range of, of, of questions we've been endeavoring to answer.
I'm going to go back to Barney's question about the square footage. The square footage on the current fire station is six thousand five hundred fifty gross square feet. And if we were to do this, the way Stu, you know, we asked you to give us every possibility so that we can cherry pick off of that. Yes, Stu Roberts from Johnson Roberts. Twenty-nine thousand. So sixty-five hundred to twenty-nine. Everything, even hallways. And yeah.
And it also includes.
You know.
Includes space for growth, like rooms for, that could possibly become dormitories for, for staff firefighters.
The, I'm sorry, I came late to the discussion, but is this up, increased needed for, to be credited or something?
I don't, I don't know that this is for accreditation. I, I don't know that fire stations are accredited the way the police station is. But what we asked Johnson Roberts to do is really give us the, kind of like we're looking at places to put these buildings. We don't know what we need. So we're looking at everything. So we wanted Stu to just give us the ultimate punch list. And then we would have to obviously pare back from that. But we did, as, as Jerry was saying, we asked him to consider the fact that at some point we may have part or full-time professional staff in there. So we don't want to have to redo the building if in ten years we change the function of the building from what it is now.
But in, in that same line of logic, Christine, is, is he also, are you also assuming a certain growth of population and therefore more fire vehicles?
Not more fire vehicles. And I don't know that the staffing would change. That gratefully, John Valentine has attended our meetings when he can. And he didn't give us any sort of indicator that there was going to be a, a big change there.
But I mean, that's a lot of increase for moving an ambulance. So you don't have to take off the bumper. I mean, what's the big driver?
Well, they, they have some pieces of, of equipment that are stored outside right now.
In the tent.
And?
And they don't have any personnel space. Plus, there's the, this notion of having different pressurized zones. So when you come in from a fire and you're covered with carcinogens, those materials don't travel to the rest of the building. You can wash them there. And then you can move to another area that's less secure. And then you have the living areas that are are pristine.
Okay, thank you.
I think it would be help. Sorry, Barney.
No, no, go right ahead. I, but I have a question and there's a moment.
I, I think it would be helpful, though, if there is a, a kind of code review in the sense that, you know, you'd said you weren't sure if there, you know, what is required by code. So if this station doesn't meet code, I think it would be really good to know what aspects don't meet code, because I think that would be germane to our discussion.
That's part of the process.
Is that part of, okay.
Well, if we have a whole list of all of the things that we could do, then we need to go through it and determine which of those things we should do.
Right. Well, I was thinking also for the existing station, if there's something that is not, is code, you know, uncompliant at this moment in time, the police station, apparently there are things that have been defined as, as not compliant. And if that's true with the fire station, that would be helpful to know.
Yeah, I think as we back out of this process, as we come down to the, okay, what are we going to do? I think those things will be the priority. Because, because when you walk that fire station, as you know, and you think about the fact that there's no classroom space that they could really use, that they're, I mean, Chief Soros has done a remarkable job with the space that he's got. But when I think about firefighters coming back from a fire and not having the full breadth of those, those zones that they need to have to be safe and for anyone else in that building to be safe when they're not fighting a fire. I, I think that it's going to be our responsibility to make that happen now, now that we know.
Barney, sorry, you hit a question.
No, that's okay. Well, what I wanted to know is I, I know that you all have done some looking at the land around the fire station. And you mentioned something about the engineer looking at some of that. And I'm just wondering if you could say a little bit more about what you, what you have learned so far about the possibility of using any of that space.
There, there are several pieces of the, the adjacent Conan land that are possible. There, there are grading issues. There is an existing well. And there is the well for town hall that are are obstacles that we would need to work around.
A little bit of wetland too.
And there's some wetlands. There's a lot of interesting space on the Conan land. But getting to it is a problem. There would need to be roads bulldozed through to somewhere. And those, those are issues that, that we might look at if, if we come to the conclusion that we need a site for a new building.
Okay.
Those are interesting, but not inexpensive solutions.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, I wasn't sure if you were looking at the actual land that is right, that the fire station sits on, the extension of that existing land, which I know then leads into the Conan, but whether there was the potential for, I guess you won't know that till you get the information back from the engineer, because it sounds like you're saying there would be the potential to build something right there next to the fire station that somehow connects to it. It's on the existing sort of what you might call the, the, the land footprint of the existing fires house. Am I thinking about that right?
Yeah.
Yeah. And that, that's an interesting proposition. We would have to examine if it would be possible to do that construction and still operate the fire station where it is. Or if we would need a temporary fire station somewhere else.
Yeah.
Which is another expense.
Yeah, that's why we were, one of the things that we were looking at the state property for is that it's, it's a little bit further from the center of town than fire would like to be, but we could locate them there temporarily during construction, if, if the state would allow us to use the property. So.
I think that didn't Steve say that's a no-go?
Yeah, we got an, we got a no on that, but Kate attended one of our meeting in August and we, that was just when we got the no, and she thinks she might have another way to phrase that question and someone to phrase it too.
Maybe, but.
Yeah.
Do we have enough time? We're all a little older on the older side. I'm not sure we have decades available to, Ryan does.
But I, I think the proposition to the state was, could you give us some land?
Yeah.
And another way is can we borrow some land temporarily, which they might be more.
Still stand by my decades coming, but so and you've determined that we can't, it structurally can't be, like, you can't put a second.
We haven't determined that at all.
That that had been.
Yeah.
We're waiting for the engineer to officially say that, but the indication when she was there was, was no.
Cheaper to build up.
Well, I can't wait to get these reports. This is going to be exciting. Nathan, did you have any questions or comments?
I do not have any. Thank you.
Okay. And Ryan, how about you? Anything? You also looking forward to the reports? All right.
I do have. Are we going to talk at all about the police station?
Part of this? Sure.
Okay. But before I do that, I, I guess I just want to support David's comment about understanding of the, of the list of all the things that Stu has included, you know, in the the, the report he gave you, the study, the program study that we that the, that the task force looks, I guess I'd be concerned about waiting to the end to look at that and determine, okay, which of these are absolute priorities, which of these are things that we don't necessarily that we, that we can't do, that somehow it, it seems to me that understanding that list earlier in the process than what I think I heard you saying might be worthwhile because trying to get a cost estimate for something that you know you're not going to build. If you, you know what I'm saying? So for instance.
Yeah, I think.
Thousand square foot program study, but if we know that, you know, that cost, we know that cost is going to be completely out of our range, then rather than pursue nailing down the cost of that, it seems to me it'd be worthwhile to then scale back to what is sort of the absolute requirement, you know, that we believe we need to have and understanding what that cost would be.
Yeah, I think that's our very next step is to.
Okay.
Is to, is to hone in on what we really absolutely need because there's no way. There's just no way you can do all of this.
Okay. Yeah. And on the police station, so.
Barney, before we move to police, just building on your comment. So another like thought model in my mind is I mean, let me step back and say, I, I think it, Chief Saris, both chiefs, in fact, have been pretty clear. I think that being in the center of town is pretty important, right? And in fire, that matters extremely, right? So the plot of land we have, right? Maybe with Conan with not, I don't know. You know, a thought process, maybe for the consultant would be, I don't know if he's done, but like what's parking and what's building footprint? And if he's, to your point about where do you put it? Maybe back into a square footage, just a pure envelope of square footage that can fit while the current building is still a building. Just how much room is there to put another building? Like site another building with the understanding that the, the old building will be the parking lot. And for a while you got to park somewhere else, but you know what I'm saying? And just kind of get a order of magnitude size.
Right.
And maybe that will help inform you too. Not only the affordability, but just practically speaking, if you could just kind of like what the high school did, right? The high school built, didn't they build a building next to the old building, then they took.
Yeah.
Yeah. So anyway, that's, thank you.
Yeah. And then just on the police station. We have more of that, right? We know sort of the, the things that are missing that, that are, are mean that they're not an accredited. They're not meeting the accreditation standards. But again, I think looking at the parking question, if you could find another place for the vehicles that have to be parked behind the police station, someplace else for them to be parked. Would that allow there to be the, give us the ability to adapt the existing building to meet those, those basic requirements and you know, I know there've been some conversations about land behind the police department and land across the street and that kind of thing. And I'm just, I guess, encouraging that continued exploration.
Well, you, sorry.
The, the TVA study and, and design that was done low these many years ago expanded that building and still preserved adequate parking. There, there isn't and probably never will be enough parking for visitors to the police station if, if something interesting is going on there. But that's a, that's a constraint of the site and I, I don't think that we'll ever be able to solve that at that site.
Yeah, but there's a decent parking lot across the street that if it's really important, I'm sure could be utilized. I mean, we're talking about fifty feet, right?
Right. Yeah.
We, we've talked about it, building a tunnel underneath.
Not a really expensive bridge, spending money.
A path to here, actually.
I also want to say, I, oh, go ahead.
No, you're out of our scope.
Well, I just wanted to say also, I really appreciate, and I'm sure everybody on the board does, the kind of work you all, the time and the, and the work that you all have put in already and, and what's to come. And I will say that you know, it's having been on a committee that did, worked on, you know, at the very, you know, granular level on all kinds of things and then came back with a proposal eventually. You know, it's easy being on the outside to kind of, you know, think, well, more should be done, or it could have been done differently, et cetera. And I just want to recognize that you all have really done all the, you're doing the legwork and the fine, you know, and the detailed exploration and, you know, I really appreciate that. And I know you bring a lot of expertise to that effort and you've, and you've found people to help you that have the expertise that we need. So thank you for that.
Yeah, I, I should say that both of the chiefs and people like John Valentine and Carrie Kissinger, you know, they just are just. you know, they just are just constantly leaning in. So we have everybody at the table to answer the questions usually when we need it.
Is the, is the work product of the report both stations? It's looking at both? And is it answering the question of, or is it rec, steering us towards a recommendation of is just stating requirements or is it saying, well, a combined building would do this and we renew renovation will do the, it doesn't have any comparative stuff like that?
What I'm hoping that we'll produce is, is a list of all the possible, all the possibilities we've looked at.
Yeah.
With a pro and a con for each one. So if we do this, um, it'll cost us less money.
Right.
Um, but it will require buying a piece of land somewhere.
Right.
So for each one of those, there'll be a bunch of choices. I'm, I'm not sure that we'll come to a position where we'll, we'll say this is the thing that.
No, but I, I, again, I mean, one of the things we thought about when we launched your ta, your, your task force or? Yeah, is do nothing, of course, right? Build a brand new combined building, build two new buildings, renovate one or the other and the other one, you know, I mean, there's like eight choices, so. It would be good, I guess in my mind, it, it would, in my engineer's mind, it would be like good to have a matrix that.
Yeah.
Every.
I think that's what we're talking about.
That's great.
I think, and I think it'll be pretty clear through the matrix.
And I'm, I'm not sure that we'll be in a position to make that choice.
No.
We, we would present it to you all.
Right, of course.
And give you the tough decision.
What's the ETA of that report?
I, I, I was hoping the end of the calendar year. Um, but I, we, I think we need to, our next meeting is going to be a really great meeting. It's going to really kind of pave the, the final direction of task force.
Are you on, you go to this?
No, I went to the one uh, talking about.
Barney does, who's on? Barney, Barney, I believe. Barney, you're on the task force, is that correct? Or not?
No.
No, uh, uh, I'm not the liaison, am I?
Uh, no, um. Button, who's got the button?
Yeah.
I think Nathan. To this committee, to this committee, it's I am.
Yeah, Nathan is.
I thought, yeah. Yeah.
Sorry, it took me a little while to find the mute button.
Okay.
Okay.
Great, well, this is really helpful. I mean, we're excited to see the end product.
Yeah.
Or the middle product, I guess.
I, I sit down with um, four or five of the smartest people in the whole world. They're just amazing. They're really good.
Good. And have you had community input at all or questions from non-members at all, or if they're?
So much.
Not so much? Okay.
But we would welcome it.
Okay.
Are you at the point where you really? I mean.
Well, I, I, I would guess that when, when we come up with a list of possibilities, that people will say, well, did you look at this? Did you look at that?
And well.
And that's what I was kind of wondering.
In a position to defend why we decided that wasn't a viable solution.
Yeah.
Okay.
And for good or bad, the mosquito comes to most of our meetings, which, which is really good.
No.
It is, well, but sometimes um, other constituents, not us, don't feel the article was correct. But what that does is it prompts them to, people to say to us, like, we got a letter yesterday that I'll share with the, the gang on uh, next Thursday, next Tuesday to say, you know, you want to, want a little clarification because it wasn't this clear in the paper. And that's, that's excellent. That's excellent. We're lucky to be in the paper.
Do you, um, you have Zoom participants as well?
Um, really, it's only like the folks who bring something to the conversation, like the experts.
Okay. But it is open and available to everyone.
And they're posted.
All right.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Good. Thank you very much.
Thank you guys very much.
All right.
Travis, six minutes ahead in your debut chair.
Love it. You wait till we're done. We're gonna.
Yeah.
Save the praise.
All right, um, so next we're going to move on to our workshop for the board chairs and members for the open meeting law and ethics training. I don't know, David, are you responsible for this or?
I am.
All right. So walk us through, what do you, what do you want to talk about?
Um, okay, well, we, we, I forget the genesis of it actually, but I think we collectively agreed at some point that um, we probably had to do some tidying up. I mean, one thing that strikes me and it strike, struck me even more dramatically, Ryan, today, when I was looking at one of your links on your TA report, which is the, I guess you can register interest on the website about things you're interested in. There's like fifty things on that list. I mean, there's, for a little town, we have a lot of committees, task forces, working groups, subcommittees, blah, blah, blah. And one thing, and I mentioned it in this list, I don't even know the definitions. It would be great if we homed in on the actual definition of what's a task force. What's a committee? What's a board, you know? But the, the, the main thing is uh, and Barney and I realized this, I think this summer, there were some complaints, maybe too strong a word, but there were some notes, let's say, where it was alleged that certain minutes hadn't been given to Peggy or hadn't been posted or were late, you know? And that's a small thing, but it's a part of, you know, um, open government. So, and then generally speaking, uh, we ourselves have not been great about making sure our charters are clean, you know, the mandates are clean. And then the bigger maybe even thing is, and we hope to get more participants. In one way, we're fortunate that the same old hundred volunteers are in every committee and board. So most of those people do kind of know how to run a meeting. But there's new people and there's new chairs and we want new people and we really, I think, should do a better job onboarding. And so Kate and I started a little list, which I sort of made into a spreadsheet and Ryan put it in the packet uh, about all the things, you know, just brainstorming, what are the kind of things we should uh, be training and we broke it, or I broke it into one, two, three, like five categories, so we can go through it. And then Ryan took it over and put on the right-hand side of this chart. Um, there's no way to share screen for people, right? They don't. Yeah. You have to get into the packet, I guess.
But let me log in because I can share.
Okay. Anyway, I mean, I think we can discuss whether certain things should or shouldn't be on the list or in the wrong category. But basically, I think it's a pretty good start of a list and then we should really decide. And Ryan said, you know, some of it, he would like to have the ATA um, drive it and that'd be great when we get an ATA. We, you know, we, I feel the select board should do a certain amount of prepping and uh, and town council obviously very critical in the, in the legal side. So anyway, I, you know, I, I think we could just walk through it.
Can I ask a question? Is the end goal though would be to then find this information and then have like every year a meeting of the chairs or a meeting of new members and have a presentation or what do you?
Yeah, I, that's a good question. I mean, my view is first of all, if we could create, I think of my own work situation where, you know, we call it onboarding, right? You develop a package of things when new people come in so that they learn quickly, like certain things, right? And, and then some other things, we, again, speaking for my own company, we have re, annual refresher courses of things people need to know. And maybe that's fine. Maybe that's all we have to do.
My fault.
Okay.
Getting there.
Anyway, so I, I think we can reflect that. I, I, my, my view would be, let's get started. Let's populate top, let's populate content. Let's figure out how to promote. It should be, in my mind, a combination of sort of PowerPoint materials and training like open meeting, you know, there should be some combination of things. And then I think we could decide how often or, you know, one thing that school committee certainly requires, for example, is a DSC, maybe DSC, no, M A, M A S C generated course. You have to take it if you're a new school committee member. That's a whole day usually, but you know, this one we can, you know, make it streaming.
MMA, I think that's a similar course for select work. And um, yeah.
Yeah, and I didn't, we didn't consult that and that would be a good best practice. Do you know of training courses on MMA sites or?
Uh, there are. Yeah, I think you're talking about designing your own, which I think would be just as valuable. It's, in terms of the best practices sites, it's, it's really a self-exploration, but we could put together best practices for each board member that's coming on.
Yeah.
That they could dive into.
Right. So what do you want to do next?
So I do have just overall thoughts on this.
Yeah, please.
So uh, some of the things identified in the master plan and some of my initial investigations involve um, it's a pretty common term in municipal government, siloing and sharing information. So the, the ATA wouldn't be the necessarily the, the staff member to do all this, but to coordinate it. So the way I see this is each, each new member or members that are interested now, or any, any member of the board would, would go through and onboarding like we're trying to build and we will build for the human resources side of the house. So it'll be a checklist of items that you need to, you need to go through with someone in order to understand. And as each person moves into their volunteer positions, then the assistant town administrator would have a connection with that person. And when the ATA is empowered to collect information from each board, there'll already be that, that relationship. So all that, all that's there for is this is your staff member that you can go to. That staff member would work with me to then divvy out who you need to speak to. And it would connect our nighttime government to our daytime government in, in a very specific way. And then we can gather information and share it as, as I mentioned in, in my very first conversation with you. So that all the boards can understand what the other boards are doing, whether that be through um, an email, a newsletter or some type of information sharing. So that's not going to solve all the problems of who's talking to who and who knows what, but it does give people a chance to see what the other boards are doing. And then it informs things like all board meetings or other events where we're connecting people. But from my ends, what this really does is it connects the staff to um, much more deeply to the boards and committees, which they want. And talking to staff members, they want more connection to the boards and committees. They want more information and they want a bigger picture of, of what, of what they're supposed to do. And I think the boards and committees will find that the staff has a lot more to offer uh, some of these committees that can help facilitate some of these conversations and connect people so that there's more efficient work and, you know, more professionalization of the discussion. So if that's what we're talking about here, which is what we are, I think it can be pretty simplified, but it can have a, a big impact on how things are connected.
I agree.
Yeah, that's great. I think this is long overdue. I, I have a copy of the Town of Carlisle Committee Handbook. Can you refer me to it with this? In two thousand thirteen? So I got this when I joined the zoning board of appeals from Peggy at the time. And it, it covers many of the things that are on there, which I, you know, taking me, meeting minutes, how often they have to be published, posted.
There's a lot of content.
So there's a lot of content. So you, this might be a good reference to start with and, you know, if we have a book. Update that.
Yep, I, it has to be more than a book because a lot of people are handed that book.
And never read it.
They never read it.
We don't even hand it out anymore, so. I mean, power, it, it it sounds sort of trite, but I mean, power, PowerPoints being presented with open Q and A are usually the most effective interaction.
Yeah, and I'll just add from uh, just, you know, recent conversations with relatively newly established committees, um, even people that have, you know, been on committees o, over the years, um, for instance, haven't always done the uh, you know, the um, one of those online sessions around the ethics training and the open meeting laws, you know, that in theory you're supposed to do when you, when you get appointed to a committee. Um, and you're supposed to complete that. Well, you know, a number of people either are unaware of that or haven't done it. And certainly new people, you know, aren't aware of that. And I, I would just second the idea of uh, of offering a, you know, a couple of different sessions and really making an effort to get every single chair to attend at least certain parts of it, um, to start us off. And then, you know, once we have more clearly established um, and up to date, you know, guidelines, we can sort of be more flexible about what it make, how to deliver the information. But I, I would really support having the um, assistant town administrator, um, you know, working with somebody from the select board, uh, you know, I'd be happy to do it, or maybe David, or David and I to actually, you know, organize a couple of, of uh, workshop sessions where you are going to do what David's describing, you know, you have a couple of different people that are going to walk through different parts and um, really give an opportunity for people to ask specific questions relevant to their experience here in Carlisle. Um, so my two cents.
What that can look like is there's a day every month where the ATA makes other staff available and anybody who wants to come in, whether it be two people, one person or ten can sit and go through this course. We'll make it user-friendly, a couple hours max. Um, or make an appointment with myself or the ATA to go over these things. And this is good for boards that you know, want to, want to sharpen up their skills or that just want to understand the bigger picture or a, again, newly appointed people. So.
Yeah.
This isn't a new concept. They, they call it boot camps, which sounds like I'm dragging my, my military side into this, but um, it, it is very effective, very town, few towns do it, but given the level of volunteerism in Carlisle, this is desperately needed and would immediately impact that, that side of the house that you keep talking about, which is connection.
Right. And, and I mean, we are, we, everybody thinks they're unique, you know, but we're we are, if not unique, we're in a pretty small set of towns. That is that small and that kind of high volunteer with really limited professional support, right? So I think as you point out, Ryan, it's good both ways. I mean, it's good for the staff to see what are the boards doing? What are they doing? And you know, how can that be efficient? So, and I think that I like the uh, things you mentioned earlier, like across the board. So if people do sit through uh, training sessions together, you know, that's a form of bonding. That could be chairs. That could be just the board itself, like the whole board should come on a particular day. The chair would, you know, can encourage everybody for that board. And they can cover the stuff and sort of trade ideas and with daytime staff. So, yeah. Just we have to do it.
I think you also need to provide more input on this, but there's a general feeling that each board needs professional support. They need staff support.
Yeah.
The, the question I have, you know, the level of experience I have is how much? So if you had a touch point with the assistant town administrator that answered your questions and farmed something out, would that be enough? Or does each board need someone to take minutes, et cetera? So you would be able to test this for a year rather than just hire staff and, and not analyze where it should go. And then we can truly say, you know, these are the boards that need more professional support, more staff support or not, or these committees uh, really need more professional support. But just to say, everybody wants someone to do their minutes. Everybody wants someone to do those things and that's, that's fine and it's encouraged and it's great. But every dollar you invest here is a dollar you can invest here. So understanding the impact of that and where it would be valuable, I think is extremely important. So using this not only to do that, but to test different aspects of the budget and staffing levels will be important.
Great. I, Nathan, we haven't heard from you. If you had any comments um, on this.
Um, I, I think this is great. I, I don't, I don't have anything to add over what's already been said.
Great. Yeah, I think you have unanimous support, it looks like for this. I think it's great too.
So you're looking for, once your ATA hires, that that would be like one of the early missions?
Yeah, so HR support, number one, and then board and committee support, which I consider to be the same. It just HR support for our volunteer side would be number two. So they're connected. And that is immediately going to get the ATA integrated into all aspects of Carlisle, which would make that person successful.
Okay.
As much as it's a priority, I think waiting till the ATA would.
Yeah, that makes sense. I think, I mean, the pre-work that could be done, but not necessary would be for you to liaise with the town clerk over this. I have not gone over this with Peggy. Yeah, you know, for content and, and Tom Harrington. Like he should for, familiarize himself with what pieces he feels legal should take the lead on.
It seems to me the town clerk already does monitor those classes, um, the uh, that they're supposed to take online because you're supposed to bring in your signed or your little certificate and she checks you off and she knows that you just haven't gotten. So I assume she tells people when they get sworn in
Right.
about what their uh, obligations are. But you know, may, maybe that's one thing we do need to just check with her on that. To make sure.
I'm thinking more content that she could, like if she prepared, I don't know, did she or did her predecessor prepare that, I guess?
Yeah, well, wait, oh.
Maybe. Just prepared by town clerk, so.
Yeah.
In two thousand thirteen.
There's, there's, and there's, but there's one more piece, and that is when people stop being members of committees, there's also um, a, a state reg that if you're no longer on the committee, you need to turn all your papers and um, files back.
Really?
Yep, section fourteen. Whoever has custody of any public records shall upon the expiration of his term deliver over to his successor all.
If you're copied on, if you're copied on something that fifty people got, you still have to turn that in or what?
No, you're supposed to turn your stuff to your successor.
Or, or if you're going to copy down an email, you'd have to delete it, I think. If you can't turn back an email.
The thing is if you didn't post the minutes and you have them on your hard drive, you need to take those minutes and get them to somebody who's succeeding you so that somebody has the minutes to that.
Right, but if they've already been posted by the clerk.
If they've been posted. If they've been posted, that's a different matter, but they have, if they haven't, and there's been some minutes.
Of course. No, I understand, of course.
We're gonna work on getting those minutes though posted as part of this whole process.
It's a multi-year.
Yeah.
I mean, the town clerk is very busy. Uh, layering this on would swamp her.
Right.
But piecing it together with other staff support should make it doable. And this would definitely be a town clerk centric effort. Just expanding her capability through the use of other staff. But one, one thing for the board.
Yeah.
You will have homework in this. So one of the key aspects is creating the right initial structure. So going as David alluded to, uh clear charges for every boarding committee as they come in. Making sure that uh you're combing through the different things that, that you wanna see done in, in these efforts would, would really speed it up to give that initial structure.
Right. So I mean, separate, there's a separate initiative that we've taken on to and we took it on last year and we did sort of, you know, halfway job. Uh, try to touch every boarding committee or major boarding committee through the course of the term. And that's one of the actions we have is to sort of one of the process improvements that I recommend is that we, and that's you and Jen and, and Barney and myself develop a multi-month calendar, like an eight months or whatever through June. And at least begin to populate each meeting and see where we can slot in boards and committees and get all them in. Then every time they come, I think that's the opportunity for us to, for all of us to review what is their existing charter and do we suggest changes or do they themselves suggest changes when we meet them? That at least was in my view. And it may be take, and it will take longer than a year. And so there may be other members, but you start somewhere. It, in school committee, we took on the, and Christine was really a leader here. We took on a gargantuan task of rejuvenating all of our policies. Which was huge and you've done a lot of that. And we took a three-year cycle. And then every fourth year, the, the person come. So you're always kind of looking on a multi-year cycle to make sure that you're not too many, you're not looking at a two thousand thirteen handbook all the time.
Right. Okay. Is there any more discussion on this? Or I think we've kinda moved that along. All right. Moving right along, we'll go to the uh select board. FY twenty-three goals, uh review plan for action steps. So I assume this is you Barney and David, if you had wanted to talk about this.
Yeah, I'm wondering, Ryan, do you think, oh, good, you're ahead of me. Great. Yeah, I mean, we, go ahead, David.
Well, we, we met as we noted in, was August ninth or no, Ju- July something, right? We met in July the plus she's out and then last meeting or the meeting before we voted him in, right? It's in the media minutes, I should remember. But uh, so we we had a very good, long discussion about what goals should be and what categories they should be in. And we added a few and blah, blah, blah. And we tried to tie it to the master plan to some degree. And then we further kind of refined some initiatives we could take on either this year or future years. But I don't think we went to the next step. Which is what is the action plan? So I don't know how much of that we should do tonight, but I think we should review it and pick some.
Great. Are you looking for us to prioritize these?
Not necessarily, in my opinion. I just think, and I'm definitely, I mean, Ryan came in sort of at the that was the beginning of Ryan when he came in on this, but we, we had put some on the right-hand column of this chart. We put other, and it does dovetail into the prior discussion. Other boards and committees that would be involved, well, not just those, and daytime government people that would be involved in helping us. And we talked about basically leveraging, for example, I'll just pick one, transfer station task force. Well, there is a transfer station task force, so gee, let's make sure we're leveraging their efforts. We can take credit for that, that goal. If they do their job, right? And same with sustainability. So I don't think, I think a few of them, we can just kind of delegate basically. And then there's some other ones. I think we have to think about what we as a board really wanna do.
Okay.
I don't have a priorities. It's just.
Do you wanna just go in order? Oh, sorry Barney, go ahead.
Well, I, I just, yeah, I was just gonna make that suggestion Travis. Just think we just start with um you know, financial sustainability and take a look at the initiatives we listed under twenty twenty-three. And um, you know, my thought is that we where we already have a, a group, say, for example, the environmental sustainability committee is now, you know, up and running is that um the, we can, we can A, say we've, we've got that going in, but B, that we want to you at least have somebody on the committee. And so I'm the liaison to that group, you know, I could be the one who's making, you know, checking in with them and also coming back to report to the select board. Um, have that group come back when we're, when they're ready with a work plan. Um, so somehow um uh, having select board members take take some, an initiative that uh they think they can help, you know, drive kind of or help follow up on.
Sure.
Well, do you wanna break this into like, if we go in the first one, fiscal sustainability? And really, a lot of that seems to fall to the town administrator. Um, at this point, as far as developing the goals, uh, or sorry, the budgeting process and such. So are you at, are you saying Barney, you'd like someone to work specifically on that, the improved, more transparent budgeting process?
Um, well, no, uh, not necessarily, given what's out to the right in terms of responsibility for that. But for instance, the next one, forming a new regionalization committee, that seems to be completely appropriate that the select board, you know, be figuring out how that's gonna happen and helping make it happen.
I agree.
Well, I'm happy to step up for that one. I'm on the magic.
Okay.
Um, and M A P C, which are regional um entities. And I'm kind of into, you know, regionalization anyway in principle. So I'm happy to follow through with that.
So we have, right, so that'd be great. I, I think we have a couple of things sort of already in the works, right? Is Steve? He teed up or he was looking at some consultants who, did he hand that over to you?
Ryan.
So I, I did follow up on that.
And it's in Ryan's report, which maybe, I don't know if you wanna jump into that right now, Ryan. Um, this.
So there's a couple of state agencies that do regionalization studies. Uh, depending on this, the speed you want these completed or the, or the complexity, they would certainly be eligible for some grant funding through the community compact grant, as long as the next governor continues with the way this governor has been funding those, those initiatives. So it could be, in my mind, that you engage one of these local planners for a regionalization study that looks broadly at whatever scope you want them to look at. And then they, that study can inform whether or not you should have an action committee that would, that would execute these. Or you give that to me, or you give that to uh another member of the staff, who forms some type of staff team. So I think that one, in my opinion, what you really need is just a, a pathway to get to the regionalization committee and then its actions and.
So, so are you advocating for staff engagement before we form a committee?
Yes.
Okay.
So I'm not sure a committee would, unless the committee is gonna do the work of the consultant, I think it would be more efficient to have a consultant.
It sounds like you're gonna, you'll work on getting a consultant, have it approved by us and then go forward.
Well, there's a grant.
Grant?
Um, proposal in there somewhere, right? To get funding?
There, there is. So we could either do a small study that would lead into a E and R grant similar to the way we do our sustainability coordinator within other community or multiple communities. I'm sure many would be interested in, in looking at this, especially um on the public safety side, dispatch, that type of thing. So that, that um could have someone sitting here explaining to you what that would look like at, at your next meeting or another meeting, just to, to scope that out. So you can ask questions. And then I would have a, a clear charge, whether we're going to go to town meeting and ask that, that be funded, or if, if we think a grant would be possible.
Right. I mean, I think, let's just say broadly, the, any of these things that involve money, we don't wanna have to wait all the way till spring to get money, right? So to my view, on any of these, we can do sort of on the cheap to get started is worth doing. And in parallel, maybe preparing work, cause you're gonna, we skipped number one, but I mean, front and center is gonna be this budgeting process. It's gonna be starting shortly, right? Good.
Yeah, I can go into that too. So the, um, the idea of building a, a five-year model or a comprehensive capital review or a long-term maintenance strategy, these are, these are all doable items, but I, I will need you to prioritize them for me in, in the staff. Um, another complication in my mind is still have to work with the finance committee and then uh, understanding what, what's coming from the governance task force for a town meeting vote on, on what the budget process is gonna look like. So there's a couple of different roads we can take with this, can build the model as we go through the budget process this year. So it sounds like the, uh, the finance committee, and this is just anecdotally, so I'm not speaking for anyone, would like would like me to work in parallel with them to understand that process and, and how the town administration would fit in feeding into a recommendation at town meeting that's harmonious and, and well thought out. We could build the, the model during that without promising a final product for this year's budget cycle. That would be implemented when the process is implemented next year. So that would give me enough time to, to build out the model the way you want it and to follow the budget process and then to understand that. Or we can build a model now to inform this year's process, but that would take.
We don't have enough time for that.
That would take a lot of my time. So I, these other things we're talking about.
I think it's much better to do what you, you first plan.
And this is also with Kim and staff and the finance.
Right. Yeah. So you, there's, in my mind, there's in terms of temporal priority, not necessarily strategic priority. Absolutely. You, you wanna go through a budget cycle with the finance committee, which itself has a new chair this year and involving Kim, you know, you, I think that's the near-term thing. We have talked to you about, and this needs to be discussed with finance committee, but taking more ownership, so to speak, of the town hall budget. So we're not like, they don't, it's just less, more efficient than every, the whole finance committee talking to every single department about every little thing. And it also helps you get the whole picture, right? So I think all those things should be near-term objectives for the twenty twenty-four. Is that what we agree?
Twenty-four.
Twenty twenty-four budget cycle, right? There have been, five-year plans have come and gone. I mean, we, we know how to do that. I think I would then, at least in my experience, I would like, just being for me, I would like to see the multi-year plan be more of a capital plan. And the reason I say that is, I think as you understand the budget operationally and the drivers, we always have the and today especially, we have the unexpected drivers of inflation and things like that. But generally speaking, we've run this town long enough and it's not that big that you can't reasonably predict the five-year curve of the operational budget. So you could build that, you know, over time, you build that model. And then at the, so that's kind of the base. And then at the ceiling is our own objectives, which we need to come up with of tax. You know, the cap on tax. And what's left is the debt and how we service it. And we need that because of these kind of decisions that will come up. How much appetite does this town, again, in my opinion, how much appetite does this town have for a capital spend? And it's a bucket and things come up, you know, the school might have something, the, the region might have something and push it our way, you know, these things happen. So I think that to me is the, maybe the second, you know, the, the multi-year objective. But I look at it more as a capital plan. Operationally, we kinda, you know, you'll work through efficiencies, things will happen. There'll be some unexpected increases, there'll be some cost savings. But that's really what I think we as a town need to have a good understanding of. So that's the way I look at it.
I agree. And the, so the, the second piece here was building a capital plan that matches the budget process as well. And there are the pieces of a capital plan everywhere that people are following that just need to be put together into one plan. And you know, it's working correctly, in my opinion, when at the end of the budget year, once town meeting's been done, you update all your tools so that it reflects what happened. And then you use those tools in the next year to inform things like your goal setting and what you're talking about. So how much?
Yeah.
How much can things increase? Uh, a lot of these staffing decisions, how much room do we have to increase staffing? How will that affect, impact the taxes? How will that impact the capital? So what I'm saying is, if you wanna prioritize me to build those tools with our finance team as the year progresses, to use them for the end of FY twenty-four and the start of FY twenty-five, that's very doable. If you wanna do them now, then that's gonna be what we do.
No, I think.
No, no.
Decided.
We, yeah.
Either way, we can do them, but.
Personally, I like David's approach totally. I mean, I think that that's big picture. That's right on. You get a handle on the budget, you know, and the general operating and it's it's not static, but it is pretty, pretty. And then we layer on the capital items because we know we're talking about some of these big things going forward and whether, you know, and once we have that, we can go to the town and say, are you willing to pay for this? This is what we've explained.
And actually, in, I skipped a little step, which in the capital plan beyond the project plan is the maintenance. I mean, MFC plays an integral, integral role because we look at our aging assets and they're gonna need some, not tens of million money, but yeah.
Capital plan.
It's all. It ties together. So I've had a lot of conversations with Steve, who's great, and I'm trying to get to the committees and you can tell that there's a feedback loop there. But what's unclear to me is, is how much is spent towards engineering and design, how much is spent towards actual projects and then how they're prioritized so that you can be moving projects along as they go, rather than saying, okay, we're gonna do this project and then we're gonna do this project and then we're gonna do this project. And that, that's a symptom of tying all the plans together. So what percentage of annual money for the MFC is dedicated towards design so that when the next project comes up, you're just constantly flowing into them? Um, I would like to understand that and work through it for a year before making recommendations on how to tie it all together. Cause that also impacts vehicles and uh, school upgrades and building projects as you discussed. There's money, there's only so much though, and you have to prioritize it and allocate it.
Okay. So I think that's kinda gone through that first section. Um, if we could move on, unless Nathan or Barney, did you have anything else? If you, um, we move on to the environmental stewardship. We've created the environmental sustainability committee and we talked about a liaison and Barney, you're that.
Barney's the liaison.
Liaison. So we're and then uh, it talks about the environmental stewardship committee, sustainability committee brings recommendations to select board on goals, policies and procedures. Um, I guess that's what they're tasked with.
Well, yeah, I guess ask Barney a question. Are they in that? Cause we noted here, all town boards committees. In addition to their consultant and stuff, is, is part of the plan for them to outreach to all the other relevant boards and committees to get input?
The, the group is met once. Um, so there's another meeting coming up this Monday where we're gonna look at the development of a work plan, kind of a timeline for that and what are the elements? And so I think, yes, I, I will certainly be encouraging that. Um, and that's part of, we had built that into the charter as well, the charge for them.
Good.
And I, I will say, on the municipal facilities committee, we had the um the sustainability coordinator attend our meeting and, and she gave valuable input that we actually um, you know, utilized or, or acting on in thinking about, you know, capital replacements and thinking about the, you know, various, she's, she's actually researching some and she's going to put together kind of uh not necessarily manual, but more information uh for us to then evaluate projects. Um, so in many ways, she's doing some of the work that I think that the committee has intended to do as well.
Which is great. Nice to have that support.
Yeah.
Uh, I have had extended conversations with her because I happened to pick her up and drop her home um, at one point. And I, I, I think she's fantastic. And we're going to get certainly, and she's very interested in um, participating with whatever we need. So I'm really thrilled about this.
And having the information, I think, is valuable because then we can make decisions and, you know, we have to balance fiscal sustainability with environmental sustainability.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, and the tr- transfer station task force, um, we had just talked about that, but they've presented to us and they seem to be kind of well on their way. I wouldn't think that there's, aside from a liaison report or, you know, making sure they're on target. I don't think there's anything else we need to do with that. Let them run unless, you know, other thoughts?
I love it. They're doing great.
And I'll just say that one of their committee members, Dan Cook, you know, we appointed to the environmental sustainability committee last time. So he's in both groups now as a link between the two.
Great.
Um, and you are too, right?
Yeah. Yep.
So Travis, you're going down the middle column right now, right?
Yeah, you're welcome to.
Well, well, because there's a bunch of stuff on the left-hand column and I'm not quite.
Well, the left-hand column is the reference in the um, um, the master plan.
All right.
You will recall, and this will come up in a little bit farther down, but the master plan had like eighty-eight recommendations.
Okay.
So we, you know, picked some that I, at least visually, I'll just say for myself visually, I tried to line them up horizontally to the closest one, but I put the other ones in there that I felt were relevant in my read and it's my read only of the master plan.
Well, I was just looking at fifteen G leverage available state and federal resources that address environmental stewardship. And I'm just, that kind of reminded me of, you know, uh, ARPA, the ARPA committee requesting that the select board send them a, um, uh, an application for some, or that somebody send them an application for, um, a grant writer for the town. And so I don't know, you know, to take that on, but that would certainly go under that. And, and there, and that would certainly help us move to the, towards that goal. And we have to do it before the ARPA money, you know, goes away. So.
And Kate, I assume that as a member of the ARPA, it's probably not appropriate for you to work on drafting the pro proposal to them?
I, I already did. And, and I, and we, and the ARPA has uh, presented to you guys and we talked about, right? And, um, forty thousand dollars for a part-time grant writer. But then I don't know where we stand with it. So I don't.
Oh. Okay. Huh. I don't remember either.
But as I recall, I don't know where we ended, but the argument was made that he or she would, you know, make several times that cost back in grants, right?
Yeah.
Correct.
So seems like we should do it.
So.
Who spearheads?
Well, that's the problem. Uh, that might be our, unfortunately, our TA who's already busy, you know, recruiting a bunch of other people, but, um, that person I assume would be working under Ryan and, um, be writing grants for the town. So for various things that we need, like you know, even for the regionalization, you know, um, thing to write a grant to M A P C for, you know, technical assistance or whatever.
Yeah. What you're thinking on that, Ryan?
I have lots of thoughts on that. So something that, that comes to mind to consider with this is how do we keep our sustainability coordinator beyond the initial grant? So understanding what that shared relationship is going to be and, and what that regionalization effort is going to be, what her role is going to be. So if her role is going to be to implement what the E S C comes up with and what the board prioritizes, then I'm, I'm not sure that the money wouldn't be better spent as her being the grant writer and using that as a pool to keep that asset for one to two years. Uh, using ARPA funds. So leveraging those ARPA funds to get more funds and having that person serve as the grant writer is certainly, certainly an opportunity. Uh, both of them in tandem would be great, but again, limited resources. So something to consider.
Well, I guess it's also something for you to keep in mind then, when you're doing your organization. You know, staff organization and what you need and that I think there's support uh, for using, um, ARPA money to pick off a grant writer. And if they bring in enough, they can then self-perpetuate after that.
Right. I mean, there, and, and there are, um, one of the things I would recommend you do kind of get familiar with the grassroots grant writing that is going on, right? So the E S C coordinator will write E S C grants. So that's fine. But we've got people at school. I don't know who does it now, but Supre used to do it. Uh, pursuing grants for education. So they do it sort of ad hoc. I know that Sylvia pursues grants for um, environmental stuff, which maybe could be subsumed within E S C. Linda's looking at grant opportunities all the time in the health space.
Um. COA.
COA is, yeah, Joan's writing grants, looking for grants.
I've written several.
Uh, she's looked for housing, uh, not she, Kate has looked for housing grants and just mentioned the regionalization. So I think I don't view them as mutually exclusive. And the question really, again, for you to pursue when you talk to them is would, would their efforts be? How would, how much better of a job could we do if somebody is really just scouring for grants and helping you know, write grants and I mean, somebody who's experienced at grant writing, who knows exactly how to write them, right? Cause it's an art.
It, it, it's not just writing them initially, it's reporting afterwards in order to keep the funding. Cause then they can be renewed.
Compliance. Yeah, that's right.
All the compliance stuff.
That's what I was going to say in terms of, um, sort of what committees need that have been writing grants is that the thing that made it very difficult to keep writing them was right, being not having volunteer, just couldn't stay on top of the, the compliance and reporting requirements.
Yeah, but also these daytime government people like Linda, you know, are spending a lot of time on it.
Yeah. Yep.
Well, we haven't really answered the question though, as far as who, who's going to spearhead it. It sounds like we all want this to happen, but it's a question of how do we get it?
I think, I, I think Ryan should do the listening tour first and come back and tell us what he thinks. I, I just, the only really the main thing I wanted to point out in response to your comment, Ryan, was uh, what's her name? The sustainability? So Sue might be great, but she, she will be focused on her mission. And there's a lot of grant opportunities out there. So, you know, like I say, why don't you talk to schools and talk to health and, you know, the various boards and Kate, you know, just let's understand the universe of grants that are available. Cause the money's there, right? It just takes, somebody's going to get it. So whoever writes a better grant is going to get it.
Every time I I'm on some sort of webinar, they talk about two more grant programs.
Yeah.
See others money going by.
I guess.
For projects that we were going to do anyway, or we could do, or we should do, right? It's not, us not trying to make sure that we all understand that this is not like make work or find things to do.
No, but I mean, we can wait a little bit.
Okay.
Come back on that.
So I guess the charge is that we'll leave it to Ryan review and then get back to us.
I, I understand the charge.
All right. Good. All right. Moving along then, um, I, I think unless, I mean, we talked about the transfer stations briefly, but we're into connectivity and access. So, um, was develop an onboarding program for new, oh, yes, we already started that.
Killing it today.
We are. Um, document the above process and then, uh, select board to meet with all boards and committees at least once annually. I think we've talked about that and how we're going to rotate that through.
That is a goal we, we should clearly take on and do ourselves.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, I'm gonna say TA support.
Does it make sense for, um, a couple of, to sort of on the five B one month, is that five B?
S B, S, oh, five.
Sorry, sorry, sorry. Yeah. Does it make sense for, uh, to either tonight or at the, if people want to think about it next time, but having maybe two people off the board that are going to like the, the, we've got the, um, some of this happening, but sort of getting it more systematized and what's the pro, you know, how are we going to review, review the charters and, um, you know, looking through all the committees that we have and determining, I mean, can some of them merge or some of them ones that we could, um, you know, either disband or put into a, you know, a, a, a different category. Um, anyway, I'm just wondering.
Yeah. So I guess Barney, my view is what you and I've discussed. I think you and I and Ryan, since we're meeting pretty regularly, should, we should have a planning session where we just take, we just create a multi-month or even a two-year calendar.
Calendar. Okay.
Just create a calendar and lay in, start laying in there's some boards, like the finance committee or some committees that we need to meet, you know, three or four times a year. There's some once a year and maybe there's some that don't even go once a year, but we really should start with, I think a straw model of what can we do? Understanding that we can really only do one, maybe two in a night. Cause we got all this other stuff.
Right.
And, and what I was mentioning earlier about the way the school committee tackles policies, the George Washington Bridge model, right? You start painting it and when you're done, you start painting it again. So i- i- if we can go through a multi-year cycle and we touch the charters each time we meet with them. You know, that's the time I think to have the discussion about, is the charter appropriate? Is the committee appropriate? Should the committee be combined? I mean, I don't want to answer that in a vacuum. I think we gotta meet with them and the goal over the cycle would be to get a, you know, more robust view of it.
Yeah.
Is your vision then that you would, like, you take a committee and then as a board, we would invite the committee, we would review the charter that committee before our meeting and then, and have them review it as well. And we go to the meeting and then talk.
Yeah, certainly. If you take a board that we don't, I think we should do it as a good practice for all of us. But I mean, if you talk about something like, I say historical commission or something, we, we don't see them very often. We should, we should do that and that, that should be the first thing we do. When you go to finance committee, it's more operational meeting, right? We have these operational meetings. So I think that's why I said there's certain, there are certain boards and committees where and some of them are independently elected, but we still need to meet with them where we have enough to do that we should be meeting with them operational. Board of Health, we just met. School board, we should meet twice. Fincom's got, we, you know, there's a few we just want to layer in and we need to meet with these guys. And then there's these other ones. We just don't meet them because unless they ask, unless they raise their hand, we don't think about it. And we really have to, I think, take the lead on saying, yes, we want you to come in. We want to talk about your charter. We want you to tell us what you have a vision for and see where that goes, right?
I would say ag is, is one that we need to see real soon.
So how do we want to get started? Let's just pick one and let's start.
Why, what, what Barney and I do, and we'll do it tomorrow starting, right? We, we recap the prior meeting and we plan the next meeting. And we try to plan two meetings out, but I'm saying we should plan like twelve meetings out or fifteen meetings. I mean, we, we just need to start laying in a calendar and figure out, and then we can, we, we don't do it unilaterally. We bring it to the, this full committee to review, right? But if you have a certain, like Kate just mentioned, ag committee, I would say to anybody here, if there's certain committees, you think we really need to prioritize. Like today, I mean, I don't know, I think it was Barney decide suggested, I should say. We need to meet with public safety. We had it on our list for August ninth. We had it whenever we met before you were here. I have the sheet here. We said we're going to meet August ninth. We didn't. But we decided it's time, right? So we did. So that was a priority. We brought them in and great. So now they've got, you know, a mini charter, let's say for the next three months is what four months, because Christine said by the end of the year, I'm not sure we need to revisit them till they come back with a work product. But so if you have some, I would say get to give us, send us the list and let's start with those.
The reason I say agriculture is because they've been wilting on the vine and I think they need.
A metaphor?
Yes.
Okay, just checking.
I think they need some inspiration, a little fertilization, maybe, uh,
It's fall. We generally lie fallow. It's spring.
Yes. Um, and you know, and maybe, you know, I think this is exactly the right vehicle for, you know, getting them in and saying, what can we do for you? What's your, what's your problem, Bobby? You know, and, uh,
So, so my suggestion is for each committee member to submit to Barney and Ryan, you know, a proposed list of ones that doesn't have to be exhaustive, just ones you think have priority and why or whatever. And, and then let's start making soup.
So you're asking about the select board to do that. Each of us.
Will submit it and then we'll.
Each other or?
To each other, to Barney, to basically to Barney. And then we'll sit down with the list and we'll try to figure out.
Yeah.
I mean, we have a we, we meet twice a month, right? So there are September, September, October, November, December, January, February, March, April, May, June, ten months, basically for this committee. That's twenty, but it's not even twenty meetings. Cause there's holidays and things. So we have certain priorities. Fortunately, we don't, we just picked up a little time because we don't have a faulty M. But there is, there are certain priorities that we know we're going to have a major chunk of certain meetings devoted to. And then we have other things that we have to leave space for things that are going to come up. Hearings and who knows what.
Yeah.
And, and then we got to see, but it would be a worthy goal to try to maybe hit two minor committees or one major committee each meeting. Let's just make a list.
So when do you want the list?
So tell me. Uh, next week.
Next week. By when? Let's just set it.
Week from today.
All right.
So we could plan on the Wednesday, whatever that is.
Yeah. And, um, it did, just, I just want to mention on that topic, um, I, I think, uh, we'll see this when we look at the draft agenda for, um, the twenty-seventh that we, um, um, David and Brian and I talked about having historic commission and the historic society coming together, even though the historic society is not a town committee. Uh, partly this is following up, you know, what Nathan was talking about. I can't remember if it was the last meeting, Nathan or two meetings ago about, you know, the need to be both encourage them to connect, but also for the board to connect more with the historic commission. So, um, when we get to that part of tonight's meeting, looking at that agenda, just that, that's, that's why that was there.
You can ask them where they're going to put the safe.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
Yeah. But you said we have ten months, that's two meetings a month, and we have that twenty meetings and we have twenty-one committees that I show.
Well, we may get through all of them. We may not, but we should try, right?
Twenty-one that we can do.
Maybe. I like that attitude. We haven't done it yet, but we, we are trying.
By next Tuesday, we'll all have our priorities and then the chair can go through them.
We meet, we meet with Ryan once a week.
So you can.
So the Wednesday is when we would do that and we'll.
Yeah.
Um, I just want to make a mention before we leave it that also buried in here is, and Ryan mentioned, um, some kind of chairs meeting
Hmm.
and/or chairs and staff, right? Because it's about sharing goals. It's about meeting to share goals and exchange information, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
And we'll leave that to you to organize, right?
Yeah. So the first, the first chairs meeting decided this week, we'll focus on the budget process, which is timely. The idea is everybody brings their process, their goals and their understandings to a meeting, and then it kicks off so that each each part of the budget has just a, a semblance of where we're starting. And then we'll reconvene that in a couple of months when budget process formally kicks off to do goal-setting sessions and, and make sure everyone's building centralized products that's shared with everybody. And during the budget process, you would meet again to share that information again. So there, there are staff meetings that, um, relevant boards will be invited to so that we can guide the process and be informed on, on the, what the decision makers want to get done. So next month would be land use, for example, and it would rotate to make sure that we're hitting all of these goals and sessions.
Could you send us, um, those dates and times so that we know when they're happening?
It'll be the last Friday of every month.
Okay.
I'll send out the, the information.
That would be helpful. Thanks.
Okay. If we keep moving the town staff alignment, that was, um, I think you've already worked on that. I mean, you're, you're hard at work and you're sending out, you know, accolades of people who are doing a good job. And I don't know, I think is there any additional stuff that we need to add to that performance recognition that was on there?
Yeah, that's going to just keep coming at you, um, as I work through simultaneously trying to learn and execute. So I, I consider that one my goal.
Perfect. All right.
Make sure it's not.
Moving along. Elevate IT working group to full committee status. So.
Nathan should weigh in on that.
Nathan.
That was his idea.
Ah, it's Nathan's.
Yes.
So as David just said, why don't you weigh in on that? You, you, tell us about what, how you want to proceed with that and make that goal happen.
Um, so I mean, I think, uh, to date, the working group, um, has been, you know, under the direction of the town administrator. Um, I think in that, uh, in that design, I think that, you know, it kind of, um, never really gained traction because it was never kind of, uh, there were just so many competing, competing priorities. And so I think that making it a full committee, um, that is open meeting agendas, let's drive things forward. Um, we'll give it more, um, gas, we'll say. And process going forward. I mean, I'd be happy to, you know, work with Ryan to build a draft charter to bring to the committee. I think something, this is something that Brian, I, I would think, you know, would be very involved in because it's going to tremendously impact town hall.
I think that's great. I think it's also timely because you can in parallel. I think that's great. I think it's also timely because you can, in parallel, once we get the committee launched, uh, dovetail that with a budgeting for fiscal 24. I mean, you're doing some things.
What would your timeline be for that, do you think, uh, Nathan and Ryan for, for developing a charge and bringing that to the select board?
And I think I'd want to chat with Brian about it. Um, we haven't had a chance to have our, our kickoff meeting yet. So I don't want to, I don't want to speak for Ryan's time. I think it's, you know, I could imagine it could be done by the neck, the, the charter could be done by the next meeting or the one after that.
Yeah, that's completely reasonable. And I've been gathering IT information to help inform that discussion. So I agree it needs structure and will face competing priorities. So, all agreed on everything that's been said.
And you like that approach with the committee and working that way works.
I think we should talk about whether or not that's a representative from boards to be a working group or, you know, a full committee. That's, it could be either of those. Depends on how efficient you want it to be.
Well, I was going to say, speaking for myself, I don't know enough about that issue to, to know, but I would think that, you know, a lot of IT, I, I think it's important to have a committee and people oversee it, but a lot of it is just central to the town administrator and the town employees themselves, because you're, you're the, you know, interface with a lot of that. You talked about when you're interviewed, the town website and, and those types of things. And I think you're particularly close to that. Um, and I could be wrong. Again, I said, this is just, I'm kind of talking, um, you know, Nathan would be also close to the, how that all works.
I think Nathan's, I don't want to speak for Nathan, but I think I read in his comment that the, having a working group that was essentially driven by the town administrator meant that it was very dependent on the particular skillset of the town administrator. And in the time that we had it, the town administrator was not very technically savvy. That's completely different now. So I think it's good dialogue between Nathan and Ryan to figure out what's best.
I guess, um, I'd like to wait, give Ryan more time to do his information gathering and decide what he thinks he needs and come to us, um, to decide.
But Nathan also has the history and he should speak, but of what didn't work, right? I mean, didn't we charge off and RJ came up with a whole plan for fiber or something and then it just died? And that's like a waste of time if you don't.
Now, we implemented fiber, um, long before RJ was here.
Okay.
Um, so we, we have municipal fiber, I think, but, you know, RJ worked, uh, really well, um, with the, um, committee and implemented the switches between all the fiber and lit up all the rest of the buildings, um, because only parts, parts of them had been lit up, but that was the way it was budgeted.
Okay. My mistake.
So, yeah.
So maybe what we should be saying is that, um, Nathan and Ryan should have a chance to talk and Ryan to get around and get a sense of things and then come back to the board when you're ready with a, with a proposal about how to move forward on this. So not necessarily saying, yeah, develop a charge for a committee if, if you don't think that makes the most sense, you know, but leave it to the two of them to come back with a proposal.
Yep. Agreed.
Does that sound okay, Nathan and Ryan?
Yep. Sounds fine to me.
Sounds good to me. And we'll prioritize it. Nathan, we'll get that meeting scheduled.
All right. And then moving on, the last one is this is create master plan implementation, implementation committee. And I just personally want to weigh in on that because I think we've already started to do that as a select board. I mean, we've, we've made our goals this year. Representative of things that we took out of the master plan. And I think we're, and, and I know on the municipal facilities committee, you know, we're taking into account the environmental impacts. So we're, we're taking into account things that are, that were brought forward in the master plan. And so I, I will say on my, my opinion on this is that, um, I worry that we get so many of these committees and so many plans and, and different things that we as a board don't focus on the most important things. And I know this is important because we want to keep the momentum. But I think we have done a good job and will continue to do a good job in that. And so I'm less inclined to, to put effort into a new committee and staff it and then have one more meeting here where we have to review the charter of that committee. And, you know, I, I just don't think, and even though it is in the master plan to have that to help implement, I don't think my personal view is, is that that is as important for what we should be focused on with our time.
Well, um, Barney and I worked on this and I think we're the ones that were somewhat responsible for putting that into the master plan because, uh, we were concerned that the master plan would get written and put on the shelf and without a committee being behind it to kind of spearhead and say, you know.
You're replacing the right one.
Um, to make sure that, you know, progress is maintained. So I, I sort of agree with you. But then I also kind of feel like having an, uh, another set of eyes, let's say, on the process and saying, you know, just kind of always making sure that the select board keeps this front of mind and making sure that the planning board keeps it in front of mind and, you know, having members from all the boards that are involved in the master plan as we are involved, but there's other boards that are involved that they would be the members of this committee that make sure that their committees keep this in.
Kate, uh, is the steering committee still a committee or?
No, we're gone.
So there's nobody right now.
That's correct.
On the tiller. Well, it seems to me there, there maybe there's a compromise of both, which is to, to Travis's point. We're, we're embracing a lot of change right now.
Yeah, no, no, I.
And we got a new guy.
I'm, I'm not saying that this is a high priority, but I think you shouldn't, I don't want to let it drop off the, the screen altogether.
But maybe, I mean, we, I would, speaking for myself, who was not part of steering committee, and certainly you two guys who were on it, we're trying pretty hard in our goal setting process to be cognizant of the work that was done. So we're doing that, like what Travis said. Maybe we give it a year and we see what we need.
Except that who is making sure that the planning board is doing the part that they're supposed to be doing in the.
Who's the planning board liaison?
Who's the planning board?
Liaison.
I am.
No, there's a volunteer.
Well, okay, I'm just.
No, you're right. You're right.
Right. And there, there are other committees. There's the energy committee. There's an, you know, the, the sustainability committee. They're supposed to, you know, they have a.
So is your view that, let's say we magically form this committee, that they would kind of go to each of the other ones and make sure that their priorities are.
Maybe they work with them to do something like we've just done here. Yeah. I mean, yeah. It was, it, that, uh, and if we read the more, you know, deeply about this master plan implementation committee and correct me if I'm wrong, Barney, but, um, you know, there's so many, as you, as we've noted, there's so many recommendations. You can't possibly do them all at once. And it was, that was one of the jobs that this was supposed to do, was supposed to help prioritize some of the things and.
Kate, I'm wondering if, um, maybe you and I should just put our heads together and maybe with Madeline about who's the chair of the planning board about, um, given that we do have, uh, some groups already, some committees already working on some aspects of this. You know, how, what do we, the, could the three of us come up with a, um, you know, sort of a monitoring plan that maybe we use for the short run, you know, maybe, you know, and, and it's looking at things, say by the end of this year and then midway through next year, um, and see, you know, see how we're doing and, um, then and then go from there. Like I'm, I, I don't have a good sense of what the planning board is taking out of the master plan that they see as their, you know, particular areas to work on. So I mean, there seems to me they're the other kind of key body at, um.
It's their committee, right?
Yes, it's their committee.
Let me ask you a question. Did, you said they disbanded. Was it just because everybody's sort of tired or?
No, uh-uh. The, the charge of the group was to complete and present to the planning board a master plan and the planning board approved it. And then it was accepted by the, um, was it accepted by town? Was it in? No, it wasn't in by last June, May's town meeting, was it? God, I can't even remember.
I don't, no, I, and actually Barney, I think you and I are the ones that dropped the ball on this because I think you and I and Madeline, we're supposed to meet and hash out this, um, implementation committee because we had a lot of discussion during the time we were making that recommendation and struggling with it. And I think we did at that point just get tired and said, well, we'll work this out later.
Let me ask you if, if, if the steering committee reconvened, because what you're describing is actually a steering job. Maybe it needs a fresh charter and the charter could be something like parse these recommendations, divide these or organize these recommendations around the committees and town government people who will be responsible for implementation. And then as a steering committee, make a schedule and get on the agendas of all those ones and discuss it and see which pieces they can take on. I mean, again, not implementation, but more like the steering of it.
Yeah. And I, I will say, um, that Jack Trost reached out to me. He was the chair of the master plan steering committee. And he reached out to me, oh gosh, maybe at the end of last week, and I haven't followed up with him to say he wanted to talk about, um, you know, how to, how, how we're, how the select board is seeing moving forward on this and, and, you know, his thoughts on it. And I know John Ballantyne has been very eager and been pushing through emails to, you know, sometimes the select board, sometimes the steering committee about making sure we get, both get information out to the whole town, which we haven't really done in any detail. And then also, you know, make sure we're following up. So, maybe, so maybe Kate, you and I take on the job of, um, figuring out with, and maybe it's with Jack and Madeline, right? What, what we want to propose for how to move, how to make sure things are moving forward on the master plan on all fronts.
Yeah.
So if I may, if I may speak.
Yeah.
Um, I think, um, you know, I, I, I'm in general agreement with everything that's being, you know, said here. I, I don't, I don't think that an implementation committee is what we need at this point in time because I think, uh, we, you know, we do a little bit too much of a, let's, let's create a committee and let them figure something out. We haven't had a sit down really other than a little bit in our, in our, in our, our planning process for this year and our, our initiative setting, um, process for this year. Other than that, we have not sat down and really talked about what do we think about this document? And, you know, uh, uh, you know, I don't think necessarily that a smaller group of us should sit down with them and figure it out. Um, I think this would be a great topic for a joint planning board, board of selecting meeting to, to go through and say, hey, what do we think about this document? Have, have, you know, whoever from the, the original committee would like to be there to, to represent it. And, you know, because if we've put together a committee and we asked them to do it, they could go down a path that isn't really what we think the priorities should be. Um, and so I, I would recommend, you know, the planning board is an elected body. We can't tell them what to do. Um, you know, we're an elected body and I, I would suggest that we sit down with them and figure it out together and prioritize it together. And, and do it as two full committees because it's a big topic. It's an important topic. We spent a lot of time and money on it. Um, I feel like if we just say, oh, these three people go off and figure it out. It's doing a disservice to the amount of work that was done.
I agree with that. Do you, uh, Kate and Barney, are you kind of on board with that as a way forward?
Yep.
Yep.
Sounds good to me.
So when do we want to do that? We should, we got to slot that in our meeting.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Let's plan it.
How soon? I mean, you guys, speaking for master plan, would that be sooner rather than later or what?
I would think maybe, um, we should try for early October's meeting, but go ahead, Brian. Sorry.
So one of the complications here is the planning board is without professional staff. So the planner is going to have a tremendous amount to say about the master plan. And the planning board is going to have to get to know this planner and then engage them with sort of learning processes I've been doing with you. So I, I agree that a goal setting, high level session would be there, but one of the, I think one of the issues is the planning board, and I don't want to speak for them for sure, but they don't, they haven't had the ability to, to talk about this with someone like me, like I'm doing with you on what's possible.
Yeah, I think we wait, wait until they're ready.
One more comment is you need structure to these meetings that you're going to have with all these groups coming in. And one of the, one of the things should be, what is, what do you think about your piece of the master plan and, and what, what are you going to do towards that? And hearing all of you talk, if you did that for a year and say in June, you'll see a lot of the low hanging fruits been taken from the master plan. Then whatever's left is going to be the most difficult and most of it is land use, to be honest, because finances is easier to handle, especially with staff. You can then steer a committee to do the hard stuff if you want to, or continue down this path. But you're still digesting this beautiful plan that, that hasn't been fully fleshed out yet.
That's a good. Who's, who's going to be coming up with those questions or the way we present? I think that's great. They adding structure before we meet with these boards and then bring in the master plan as a question, you know, so that they can think about it ahead of time and come to, you know, if that's what you were saying, something.
If it was me, it would be what are your goals? What are your problems? And what are you doing about the master plan? And that's.
Those three, those three.
Yeah.
Well, I think that's a good set of goals for that. Yeah.
Not, not so much, what do you think of the master plan? How do your goals fit in with what the master plan has recommended?
If they know that they're, have a piece of that, because that's not a given.
Right.
Nor uncommon in municipal government.
Yeah.
Well, it might be though, that, you know, going back to Barney, that Barney and I and Madeline could ensure that the committees do know that they're, have a part of the master plan. And that's one thing that we could be working on to ensure that they just are at least informed.
Sure.
I think that's not fearing anything, but it's at least.
We, we should all do that as a select board when we talk to.
Or to your liaison, yes.
When we're, we're, and, and we adopted our goals this year with the framework of the master plan in mind. And I think we're using it the way it was intended. So I'm, I'm, I don't know. I think, and I think if we are to invite these boards to our committees to, to see us and have this and, and make the master plan one of the questions, I think it further solidifies that we care about this and that, that we're asking for them to tell us, you know, how they're focused on it. So, okay, um, let's plan on that as a thing. With any timing though, I think Ryan's point was we should wait a little bit until there's for the planning board.
Yeah. They're getting close, right?
We have an interview next week and we'll have more after that, after the interview.
Okay. And then the last, um, hire the town planner, we're working on that.
Yeah.
Yeah. So that has to go.
Carlisle character.
To the planning board and then, you know, there'll be some time. So it, we're still a month or two away.
All right. And then develop land use and space plans to serve community needs.
This, in my opinion, is super high priority. It has to do with, you know, everything I've been doing, looking for land for any kind of municipal use. Uh, it doesn't seem to me that we have any at this point. There's a couple of properties that are coming up for sale that I think I was one of which came, um, to the planning board, um, yesterday. And we don't have any criteria to know whether we should buy these or not. And so I, this is something I think we need to be ready for. So that when a piece of land comes up or even if it hasn't come up, that we could even approach an owner to see if they would be, you know, willing, but we have no criteria for this.
Again, is that a town planner job?
Well, it's partly, it's partly, but I mean, it's also we, you know, we could start gathering some information without a town planet.
It was we, chemo.
Well, the, uh,
gesturing to an empty audience. For the, for the audience on Zoom, Kate gestures to empty chairs.
Yes, public safety. Thank you. Uh, task force, housing trust, uh.
But what's the, uh, what is the charge? What are you asking? But what's the, uh, what is the charge? What are you asking? Like say for. Like say you go take, take it back to C A H T. What do you, what are you asking?
Well, we're asking what's.
Travis is nervous because he's two minutes over his skin.
Yes.
Trains run on time.
What, what do you need? What are your needs? And, and what criteria, you know, do you have for, you know, if something were to come up? Uh, what would you like to see?
So I understand it for housing because we've talked about it a lot. And I know it for public safety, obviously, because we've talked about it, but what other ones?
Recreation. Recreation already has it. The open space and recreation plan. Why shouldn't there be? Housing, well, in fact, housing is working on a housing production plan. Okay, so I'm, I'm working hard on it, but. There are other municipal. Needs in town that also need to have a plan.
I, I tend to think that that is more of a town administrator stration, not necessarily administrative, but. And so when we talk about the town, the planner. Um, that that would fall to that because we're moving, I, I think, big picture, at least this is my interpretation. We. We have hired a new town administrator and we're trying to move a little bit away from. You know, we're more in the goal setting and that's why it's important to have these discussions about what are our priorities. But when we're tasked with actually doing some of the work, you know, I think where we have staff available. And if we do deem it a high priority, then we allocate time or we, we ask of them to have their time and resources dedicated to that. But I think at this point, that would be a better use of our time and, and goal setting is to have that delegated. Once the person's in place. That's my opinion. I don't know. Barney or Nathan, do you? Thoughts on it?
I'd be interested in what Ryan thinks about what you just said and makes sense to me. It, it makes sense to me, but I'd be interested in what Ryan has to say about that. Like, what is he gonna say? Enough?
Fair enough.
No, I won't.
You should, because we don't want you to be ineffective either. If you get too many things, you're not effective anymore.
Yes, so far you haven't gotten it. So the. Kate, I've, I've heard you loud and clear on this and I couldn't agree more, but the, the only thing that I can do at this point is establish a. Chance for success for, for our town planner. So what, what I have done so far and what the staff has done is. Tomorrow, we're meeting as a land use team. And I, I agree with you. There's a great plan here and there's a great plan here and there's some great processes here. Like we have a tremendous board of health, tremendous concom. And a great volunteer boards that are doing a lot of work. We just need to bring it together. So if we establish that, um, it's a team approach. And the, establish the parameters for success for the town planner, then this will clearly be one of the first goals and things that need to be accomplished. But we need that professional. Otherwise, we have to go to a consultant. So what we're doing right now is prepping the. Prepping the conditions for the person to come in. And I think when they come in, if we do that, it'll be fast. Which is what, what you're really saying. You want it done soon. So I.
I want it done yesterday.
All I can do right now is set the conditions for that to happen quickly.
Yeah, that's, that's great.
On the, that sounds good. On the prior objective, hire town planner, we had some. Discussion as to whether the salary range listed was sufficient to get quality candidates. What are you seeing?
We're not getting a lot of, a lot of candidates, but I couldn't say for sure whether or not that's salary-based or whether or not there's a shortage of. Town planners who want to work in, you know, smaller town with, with different focuses than, than urbanization and that type of thing. So. After this round and we, we go through these candidates, if there isn't a suitable candidate, then those are conversations I'm going to have to have with. People who understand hiring planners better than I do.
Okay, fair enough.
Thank you.
Okay.
We're done.
I think we've, we've ended that section and we're on to the assignments and resignations for the evening. So. Uh, we'll start with the proposed motions and if. Anyone wants to make these motions, but this is the L R T A Advisory Board that vaguely was created when Tim Goddard retired.
I move to designate the town administrator Ryan McLean to serve on the Lowell Regional Transit Authority Advisory Board to represent the town of Carlisle.
Second.
All right, any discussion?
Um, I just want to say that, uh, David Klein used to be the head of, the former head of C O A. Used to be the representative, so I was kind of surprised. Yeah, anyway.
Okay.
Yeah, actually, you know, Kate, I'm glad you, you mentioned that because, um. Ryan, I don't know if you had a chance to talk to Joan. I thought, um. I know she told me I thought, I thought I communicated this with you, but maybe I didn't. That she would be perfectly happy to serve as the representative since they are the ones that use the, um. Regional Transit Authority.
I move that Joan is the representative for the L R T.
Alright, so I withdraw the former motion and I now move to designate. Joan Ingersoll, um, to serve, um, on the Lowell Regional Transit Authority Advisory Board to represent the town of Carlisle.
I second that.
All right, any other discussion on that? All right, seeing none, we'll take a voice vote. All in favor of the motion.
We have to, sorry, we have to do roll call because we have two, um.
Remote.
Oh, remote. Oh, thank you. Thank you. Okay, so we'll do a roll call vote, um, starting in alphabetical order, order.
Arnold eye.
Brown eye. What L I?
Reed eye.
Snell eye.
Congratulations, Joan.
Yeah.
Right.
I don't believe that David was on M B T A though. Do you, did you, um. Did she say anything about that, Barney?
Uh, no, and, and that was not hers before.
I didn't think so. So you're stuck with M B T A.
I'd like to be on that one.
Okay, so I move to designate the town administrator Ryan McLean. To serve on the M B T A Advisory Committee to represent the town of Carlisle.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll take a voice vote.
Roll call vote.
Roll call vote. Sorry, you just said that.
Arnold eye.
Brown eye. What L I?
Reed eye.
Snell eye. Okay, the motion carries.
Council on Aging and Human Services. Has that name been, um, formally changed? Have, have we gotten?
Yes, it's the Council on Aging and Human Services.
Okay, I just was wondering if it's been official. I know it's voted it in town meeting, but I don't.
Official.
Okay.
We did vote at a town meeting.
Didn't it had to go through another step?
Yeah, it has to go to the, um, A G's office.
Okay, never mind. Never mind.
All right, I move to appoint John Ballantyne, two sixty-eight Fifth Street to serve as a full-time member. Of the Council on Aging with a term expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Any discussion?
Um, I would like to have the motion changed if, uh, the A G has changed the name of the, um, council.
Action for Ryan, check with Joan.
All right, but I don't think that should hold up.
No, no, no. I, I, all I'm saying is that.
If it does, yep.
Yes.
Okay, great. So we'll do a roll call vote.
Arnold eye.
Brown eye. What L I?
Reed eye.
Snell eye. Okay, the motion carries.
Move to appoint Julie Durrell at two fifty-one Fifth Street to serve on the Land Storage Committee. With a term expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
All right, any discussion? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote.
Arnold eye.
Brown eye. What L I?
Reed eye.
Snell eye, the motion carries.
And I move to appoint Eric, is that Bales or Balls?
Bayless.
Bayless, there's none of the above. Okay, one oh five Noel Farm Road. To serve on the Environment Sustainability Committee with a term expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Any discussion? Go ahead, Barney.
In the discussion, I just want to say that, um, we accidentally, uh, left out the letter of interest from, uh, Debbie Bentley. And I sent it to you all. Um, I, I just learned about this earlier this afternoon in talking to Sue Thomas. It had. Come to town hall but got lost in the shuffle. So, um, I'm wondering and her, I, I emailed her letter of interest around to the select board. I don't know, like at four o'clock this afternoon or something, five o'clock, whether we could also include Debbie Bentley. And I have her address here, which is. Uh, one. One twenty-nine Heald Road, one twenty-eight, sorry, one twenty-eight Heald Road.
Okay, so I'm going to amend my, um. Motion to appoint Eric, um, Bailey, Bayless at one oh five Noel Farm Road. And Debbie Bentley at one twenty-eight Heald Road. To serve on the Environmental Sustainability Committee with a term expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote.
Arnold guide.
Brown eye. What L I?
Reed eye.
Snell eye, the motion carries.
And last but not least, I move to accept the resignation of, um, Kenneth Billetts. Serving on the Cranberry Bog Working Group effective immediately. And I want to add, um, that we do so with regret and appreciation for his, um. Great service on that group.
Okay, here's second.
Second. You don't need to, there's no motion. You just, do you have to move to accept the resignation?
Yes.
Yes, second.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote.
Arnold eye.
Brown eye. What L I?
Reed eye.
Snell eye, the motion carries. Thank you. Okay, so we are going to move on now to the town administrators' report.
All right, thank you interim chairperson, acting chairperson. Starting with the, uh, transition work I've been doing, I continue to work with our. Staff and vendors to understand the great town of Carlisle. One of the. Example is meeting with our I T provider, Drive Tech, to understand how those processes work. Uh, what was done in the past, what's not done currently and what their recommendations are for change. Um, one of the things that I'm immediately doing is auditing the hardware, software and email accounts. Um. This should be done periodically, annually, because we need to purge them and make sure that they're all done correctly. And Jen's been. Instrumental in this, uh, helping to understand what accounts do what. So all of those things are very important, uh, even though they sound small. Ton of information coming in, but I've been focusing a lot on facilities management with Steve. I'm going to be going to the, um. The M F C to, to understand those processes and better inform long-range capital planning. Also been looking at town space allocation here in town hall and then procedures here in town hall. Um, and I, I really learned them when I messed them up. So when I didn't book the room right for the staff meeting. I learned that procedure pretty quick and how it's done and working on documenting all that. So you don't have to continually train people like me. On how to do things correctly. And then in the, um, coming weeks, I'm going to be looking at the budget process and, and working with Kim to understand growth drivers like benefits, debt and capital. To inform some of the, the products that we talked about earlier. So rather than. Talk about this, I'm just going to show it to you real quick. Uh, this is important to a lot of folks, especially in this room. And our, yeah, so. Just getting to it here. So the clerk room. So to orient you, the, the left side of the document would be the back of the room over here. Uh, where the town seal used to be. I found that out. So the new tables, which will be here in a week or two, will be. Going over there, that can be in a long, long setup or a V shape. With the town seal behind it, going to bring the flags in here and some other information that you want to share with the public. And then on each side, as you see on the right side, as we're looking at it, there's a screen there. There'll be another screen on the left side. And then there'll be a ninety-inch screen here and a ninety-inch screen here behind me that will all project what you're seeing here on the screen. And we're going to get rid of the projector. So we'll also add. Uh, something like, um. The Google Chrome casts to each, each television so that you can project one or the other. And this can be a, a meeting room. But primarily, what we want to do is make sure that the C O A has access to this room so that they can use it for programming and it can be a true multi-use space that's green. So that will be the meeting setup. This will be the common area where we are now. This table will remain and go upstairs for meetings up in the, in the Heald Room. That's going to happen this week. And then the flooring will be done, uh, first or second week in October. So this room is going to change to a multipurpose room. That I think will be, um, beneficial and user-friendly. And then we'll clean it up and make it nice, hopefully after conversations with the historical committee. Society and commission in the coming weeks.
Great.
Going back.
So Ryan.
Yes.
Oh, okay. I made, I thought I was, um, mute, um. I thought that the new table was going to be like a V shape or something like that.
It can be.
On wheels.
It can be either. So it can be configured however you need it. So. Long for formal meetings, uh, V for more inclusion or square for.
We, okay. We, we purchased a, um. There are two tables, two verti, two rectangular tables, and we purchased that little V. Shaped thing so you can. It was your idea, I think, Kate.
I thought we got two Vs.
Maybe we had two Vs, but anyway, we can do both. Yeah, and so you can make a Chevron shape or you can make, and lots of different shapes.
Almost semicircular when we meet so that we're not.
We can look at each other.
So we can see one another. And, and so that the audience can see us as well.
Yes, so I met with the. Cable provider to ensure that this would be the maximum setup for participation. And the new equipment will also have remote capabilities, uh, the owl-type video. Monitors and, and audio projectors that can go into any of the meeting rooms here. Will strongly be encouraging all committees to once again engage with, um. Information sharing through taping meetings and getting those up on the YouTube site. Right now, the select board is, is really the only one that's going up. To include the school committee. So we're hoping. Uh, everybody, once they see the room and use it, can engage with the new, new equipment and, and be a little bit more accessible to the public. In terms of human resources recruitment, we've talked about at length, uh, hoping by the end of October to have two of those important hires are. My employee conversations are yielding a lot of H R practices that are in place, but just need to be, to be coordinated. So. That'll be initial target. I'm documenting it all and creating a share point for myself and the A T A to tackle together. Um, and just so it's clear, I'll be continuing quite a bit in H R function, not just passing all that off, but executing it will be the A T A's. Uh, our primary responsibility. And then digitizing and automating it will help, um, not need more future H R staff. And then lastly, I'm building, uh, some employee tracking products that I think will be useful and taking products that already exist and building it out. So that we can understand levels of F T E, um, organizational charts and, uh, different changes that people are asking to include. How to analyze H R S study for future recommendations on, on COLA, et cetera. So this document should be pretty useful in, in the modeling sense that we talked about earlier. Resident service, so we put together our three teams, resident services, the finance team and land use team. These aren't new teams, but just re. Re-emphasizing them. So resident services will be focusing on our, our, what could be vulnerable populations and programming to youth, seniors, veterans. Disabled, food and finance insecure. Lot of great stuff already done there. Again, just assembling it with our, with our staff. Uh, they all do different things and now they're going to talk to each other and we're going to create one product to make sure that we're. Focusing on that. That's a once a month type get-together unless, unless necessary. And the, the public safety chiefs were instrumental in. Sharing information about how this can flex during emergencies and we can incorporate it into things like COVID or, or winter storms. Finance team, we met and talked about our goals. All of the goals that you talked about tonight will be incorporated that and we're going to make it. Uh, it's pretty regular but doable. So one financial policy, one focus per meeting. Uh, make it efficient and then invite our nighttime government to observe and participate in that process if necessary or if they want to. And then, uh, land use will meet tomorrow. That's all of our land use departments and functions to try and coordinate that and, and create more things like. Like checklists. So the, uh, thing that Kate's talking about, which I think is great is. We have this need, this comes available, we hit the team up to see if anybody's board or committee wants to discuss that more. And it just creates an efficient way to share that information.
Is RecCom part of land use? RecCom.
Um, we're gonna, everybody will be involved. We're just kind of building the meetings and then inviting people. So one of the things I first ask is who should be here that's not? And then the meetings get bigger and bigger. And pretty soon it's the whole town and then we just have a town meeting, which is fun. But, uh, we do keep it efficient, a half an hour meetings. And if you don't need to be there, you don't need to go, but, um, I'm finding the staff really wants that shared communication and, and it's been great. Uh, I'm not having to ask anyone to go. They want to come and they, they bring notes and they share ideas and they're, they're very talented. Communication wise, I just, I'll make this report public, but the, uh, Facebook, Twitter accounts and then the website subscriptions and notifications are. All linked for people to use. We'll build that out in the next year. And then getting here to our action items, so the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail is meeting tomorrow in, I'm sorry, on Thursday in Concord. They've invited a representative and I'd be happy to go and see. Um, how much we should participate that and, and who should go. I'll report back to the board, just looking for the board's, um, blessing to send me there as their representative. I have a one-day. I have a one-day liquor license that you've seen before, but has now been vetted by the police chief, one of those Carlisle procedures that I'm learning from Library Director Martha Feeney-Patten for a one-day liquor license. And then there's a proclamation from the Concord, Concord Carlisle Community Chest, which was featured prominently in our Resident Services meeting as a great organization that helps here in Carlisle. They're celebrating their seventy-fifth anniversary and are asking that we proclaim October the Community Chest Month here in Carlisle. So those are the three action items. If you want to take them up, Mr. Acting Chairperson.
Sure. I guess we'd have to start with making it, having a motion for the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail Board Meeting.
I, I move that we delegate our town administrator to attend the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail Board Meeting on September fifteenth in Concord.
Second, we call it the beef heart.
Representative. The beef heart. Uh, any discussion?
You've got young kids.
Remote. All right. So we'll do a roll call vote, starting with Barney.
Arnold, aye.
Brown, aye. What do I like?
Read aye.
Snell, aye. The motion carries. Thank you.
Move we approve a one-day liquor license for the Gleason Public Library as it has already been signed by the Police Department and contingent on their getting their insurance for Friday, October fourteenth, from seven to nine PM.
Second.
Any discussion? All right. Roll call vote.
Arnold, aye.
Brown, aye. What do I like?
Read aye.
Snell, aye. The motion carries.
And I move that we declare Concord, Carlisle Community Chest.
October. We declare October.
Month. To be October, October to be that.
I have to rephrase the motion.
Yeah. In celebration of the seventy-fifth anniversary.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none.
I want to, whoa, whoa, whoa. I just want to commend the, the quadruple C. Given to it for many years. They're really worthwhile. They run it well, and they do actually very good work. So thank you. Quadruple C.
Great. We'll recognize that if we vote for it. So let's take a roll call vote.
Arnold, aye.
Brown, aye. What do I like?
Read aye. Snell, aye. The motion carries. Thank you.
All right. Thank you to the board. So some staff recognition. I'd like to recognize Peggy and Gretchen from the Town Clerk's Office and all their great election workers for executing a primary election. It is a lot of work. The mail-in votes, the early voting, the extra time that people don't recognize. You, you have to have town staff here to do those things, to explain it to people. And they were very good and very diligent. I insisted that I be allowed to go to this kitchen area during the voting and was politely and warmly told that that's not how it works and to go back up to my office. So I was just testing them. They did a great job. And they're, they're very professional and efficient. So really appreciate them, the work they put in. I think everybody knows that it's underappreciated. They, they have to deal with, with many things. It is a very passionate thing to vote, and people come with, with all the emotions that they should. And our staff handles it professionally. So well done to our, to our town clerk staff for executing over fourteen hundred and fifty votes during the primary election, and good luck to them in November, when it gets even more, more real.
You're here.
Yes. And I, I would like to thank you and recognize you for recognizing the staff because this is something.
Double recognition.
This is something new, and I think it's something very welcome as a, a new addition to our, our meetings. Thank you.
Absolutely. Ryan, you have a declaration in the packet. Do we have a hard copy for signature?
Because of the, the flux here, we'll be reaching out to, to sign things.
And I'm wondering if you could space it so that, so that Travis's name would be on the same sheet as everybody else.
Yep, I did notice that. No, but he's cherry special.
Or put them aside or something, you know? Doesn't have to be one on top of the other, maybe.
Kate will consider it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kate, for looking out for me.
Yeah.
All right. So it looks like the cemetery deeds also will have to go be done. There, you don't have them here.
Right. Not to sign, but we can.
We have to do the motion.
We have to look at the, before you flip to that, we should look at the agenda for next.
Travis, before you do that, I'd just like to also thank Ryan for his town administrator's report. And also for the update you've been sending out, you know, generally on the previous week that you've been sending on Fridays. And in particular, I'd just like to commend you on building for the first time, I think, this Resident Services Group. I'm not sure we've had that here.
Right.
Have. It's been a long time ago, and it's, it's just a really smart and great idea. And I'm sure that the people that were involved were really happy to, to be able to share and, and work together as a team. And the other, other groups that you've brought together, I think it just, we're really have a payoff in all kinds of ways. So thank you for your, your good work so far.
Yep. You're here.
I'm uncomfortable with praise, so thank you. And the, the idea that, that residents serve, that that's been happening for sure. So putting them in the same room and letting them work is, is, you know, something that's pretty easy to do when they're doing all the hard work and coordinating it. So getting people in the room and, and learning from them has been, has been great. Everything I thought it would be incoming here. So I appreciate it.
Good. Is there, and, and also before we move off the town administrator's report, don't we typically do the next week, the next meetings?
Mentioned that.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. Sorry. I'm, I'm not, I'm sorry. It's a problem with being remote.
That's okay. So yeah, thank you for putting the agenda up there. Does, is there any, are there any comments from the select board on the agenda?
Oh, wait. Are you sharing it on the screen?
Yes.
Yes.
You're, um, I noticed we've got, so you mentioned Historical Commission and Historical Society, right? Our seven old.
Yeah, I was, well, that, Nathan, you may want to speak to that, but that was my recollection of the agenda, the select board meeting where we talked about sort of bringing both of them together if they were interested in joining us.
Yeah, I think it, I think it would honestly depend upon what the topic was, right? You know, just saying, hey, come in and tell us what you're doing. I, I, I think, I don't think, I don't think that would be fair to them. You know, the Historical Society is not a town body at all. And so I think if, if we're going to ask them to join, it would be my opinion that we should have a fairly structured, you know, this is what we want to get out of it. This is, this is why you're, we're asking you here. And not, you know, not just ask them and, you know, just in for a chat, if that makes sense.
Well, what, what would you see, Nathan, as being a worthwhile structure for a, a conversation with them that include, or should we not do it that way and just have the Historic Commission come in?
Well, I mean, I guess, I, I, you know, I think the first thing, you know, you're just thinking about this off the top of my head right here, not, you know, not having researched it because this is a future agenda item. But I think the first thing is, you know, just everybody just being very clear as to, you know, what is the charter of the Historical Commission? And, you know, you know, us understanding that and us learning from them what they're doing to fulfill that charter. I think that, you know, I, I went to the Historical Commission earlier this year, and I talked to them about kind of what their charter was and, you know, what they can, what they can leverage us for, and, you know, the fact that, you know, we're here for them. But I think that one of the things that's often forgotten is that the historical, the Historic Commission is not a Historic District Commission. It's a Historic Commission. So they are responsible for, you know, they're, they're, they're in charge for the Historic District, but they're advisory for all, you know, historic artifacts and buildings and things like that throughout the town. And so I think just talking with them about that and what they're doing and what they're thinking, and just getting an idea as to what's going on would be helpful. And I also think making sure that they understand that, you know, that we support them, you know, when they have issues, you know? I mean, often what happens in Historic District is, I'm not going to say often, but sometimes what happens in Historic Districts, it's a, you know, I'm just going to act and I'll ask for forgiveness later. And that's kind of frustrating when you're, when you're on the commission. And so, you know, when I was on the Historic Commission, you know, you know, we had a very good relationship with the building commissioner, so permits would not be pulled unless he, you know, he could see that we had approved it and things like that. And just like, what kinds of things could we do? I, I don't know if that's happening or not now, you know, but what kinds of things could we do to support them? And I think that's really kind of the types of discussions, in my opinion, that we should be having with all of these boards. If we're asking them to take the time to come in, I think we should just have a structure as to, you know, how we want to talk and what we want the outcomes to be. And I think mostly the outcome of that should be what should, what can we do to support them? Because they're all, you know, they're not all, but many of them are, are, are committees that we put together.
Right.
Now, I think bringing the Historical Society in at the same time. And I think, I think we just really need to think through that one.
So maybe we hold off on that.
Yeah.
And start with the commission.
Yeah.
And, and I think that Ryan kind of laid out, you know, to make it effective, as he said, to come, to have the, the boards or committees that they come before us to have a series of questions ahead of time that we would ask them, and so they'd have preparation. And it's really simple. I mean, or could be simple. He said, you know, goals, needs, and then, you know, how those goals fit with the master plan. We're kind of a, a three-step, you know, evaluation. But I think, I like what you had to say, Nathan, where you said, you know, we're, what can we do to support you? You know, and, and, and that's, you know, maybe another part of that, that process. But I, I think it would be helpful to have a standard just set of four questions so that they come, there, there, it's not just an open discussion. It's very targeted. And, and I think, but the other point that came up that you mentioned, Nathan, was the charter. And I think that that would be, you know, and I think it's okay to even start, in my opinion, to start that, this upcoming meeting.
We will do.
To, to review the charter, send it out to all of us, send it out to the, the, the committee or the board and, you know, that's coming before us and say, we're going to review it, and let's talk about that. And then let's talk about your goals and what your needs are. And then, you know, what.
Yeah. And I think just making sure that we understand, like, when, when can we, you know, when, when, when is it our charter and when is it a state law or a town, a, a general bylaw that gives, like, the Historical Commission, we can't just change their title. Their, their charter. But the other committees, we can. And so I think we just need to know before we go into this a little bit, you know, maybe Ryan could help us with what, you know, what we need to know.
Is that okay?
So I was just going to say that, Nathan, well, in, in the instance of the Histor, the Historical Commission or the Planning Board, I, I will send you the statute that, that enabled that committee that was adopted by town meeting or by state law. In terms of your committees that you've established, then I would hope that we would discuss the charter. You know, the relevance of the committee and, and what they should be working on. So I think that's a great point, and that can be done before the meeting. Here's what the Historical Commission does. So, because, you know, I have to look that up a lot too, and I do this every day. So what, what is this commission supposed to do? And it, it also matches your, what is the difference between a commission? And a lot of it is just how the state wrote it, but sometimes they do have different meetings.
Do we want to give Ryan kind of the lead to do that and come and, and not only present that, but with the questions and send that to, or do you want to have?
Well, I think, well, we'll, we'll meet, we'll meet. We can start talking about that even tomorrow. I think what I think would be good is to, yes, maybe Ryan or Barney communicate to the chairs of all the ones we say, you know, this is one of our goals. We want to meet with you. We're putting together, we're going to work with you to put together a schedule, and here are the four things. I like what you said. I wrote them down. Here are the four things that we said, planned to present. Okay. Give Ryan credit. So we'll figure that out. But I think communication and then, you know, once we get fidelity on our schedule, we'll start to remind them, okay, we, we have you slotted for blah, blah, blah like that. But I do want to circle back on Nathan's comment, because I, I don't know enough, I don't know anything really about the Historical Society. I take your point. It's not a board, but because they have, if I understood you correctly, they have purview over the, they don't have any purview. Society is not. What do we give all this stuff to?
The society.
Runs a little museum.
Yeah.
And that's all.
Because the third commission has no.
Got it. Yep. Okay. Thank you. Never mind.
And we're going to see the planning board.
Yeah. So do we have a certain, other than those four questions, do we have? I guess, talk about town planner, right?
What, with the planning board, are you asking about the planning board item?
Yes, ma'am.
This is the one, Kate, that you and Madeline wanted to have MAPC, a joint meeting of the planning board and the select board to hear the presentation of the housing production plan.
So is half an hour sufficient? Because we should take advantage of.
Let me check, let me check with MAPC, because we just finished having a forum, which I was going to report on at liaisons, but let me see if we'll be ready.
I, I did want to ask though about this meeting with these committees or boards. Do we have to give them enough time to prepare to meet as a committee prior to? Because if we're, the select board's sending them information, saying, hey, we want you to come before us, and these are the questions we want you to answer, but they haven't had time to even meet because maybe they have to meet as a, you know, it's not.
Well, most of them will be after. We, we're just talking about the first couple ones. So maybe, I don't know. That's a good question.
That's a good point, Travis. I think once we knew our schedule, we could be letting them know, you know, six, four to six weeks ahead of time to say, hey, you know, we'd like to have you on the agenda such and such a date, you know? And, and have, get their commitment and, and give them enough time to meet if they wanted to.
Right. But, but to the specific point.
Of the historic.
Two boards that are on for two weeks from now.
Yeah, but the, the second one, the number three, planning board, is not for that discussion. That's a different thing. They're here.
Yeah. So we won't have them. It's just historic.
Well, two different things. So historic, will they be, will they have met prior to seeing us? Do we have anybody of any?
They meet on Wednesdays, and I don't know which Wednesday necessarily.
Yes, they will. They meet on the twenty-first, and they were invited a week ago. So they do, they have the lead time.
We should get them that note.
Good, Ryan. That's great.
For the twenty-first.
And then, so planning board, you're saying it's about the production plan?
Housing production plan.
But, but there are a couple of other things. I mean, we can update on town planner, I guess, and on master plan.
We, we could, but I mean, that, that was originally the reason they were, but I have to double check. Thank you for reminding.
Yes, this was your request, and also I think you and Madeline together, I think, hadn't you talked to her about it too?
Yeah, I did. I did, but.
Yeah, okay.
Getting old and, you know, rebreathing in a mask makes me a little foggy. So what can I say?
Do you, Kate, do you think you could do that before our planning meeting tomorrow afternoon?
I will certainly.
Have it try? Okay. Great.
And just to be clear, again, going back to the committee or like Historical Commission that's going to come before us, I'm okay with the chair or you and David, the chair and David, just coming and the town administrator, coming up with the questions and just sending that out. I don't.
We just, yeah, we just wrote them.
You do? Okay. As long as that's it.
I think, I think your idea of a general, I think we should send, or Ryan should send a general memo to the chairs of all the ones we plan to see with, right now. So these are the questions we're going to be, we're going to be asking in addition to any specific issues you have. We'll reach out to you for a day.
Yeah. Maybe before he sends it to everyone, we do one trial run for, see how it goes in case we have the wrong questions.
Good idea. Okay.
Good idea.
All right. Well, I'm behind.
I'm sorry to do this, but I need to, I need to, I need to drop off.
I know, because I haven't done my job, Nathan. I haven't kept to nine thirty here.
My dog is making it very.
Fair enough. All right.
He needs to go outside. All right.
Thank you for attending. All right.
Bye-bye.
All right. The last thing then, I guess, is the liaison reports.
Wait, the regionalization is.
Well, hold on. Are, are we good with this draft agenda? Sorry.
But what's going on? Is this something you're going to drive, the regionalization?
Yeah. So that would be the discussion about consultants and what that looks like.
Okay, great. Okay.
Anything else on that agenda, Barney? Sorry, I jumped in.
That's okay.
I do have a comment on cemetery deeds, even though we're not signing them. I have to ask this question. I've never looked at these before. But I did notice that they all say, no, that maybe I didn't notice that. It says somewhere in here, known all men by these presents and blah, blah, blah. Is that known by all men?
Yeah.
The twenty-first century? Is that still something we want on those deeds? And do we have any flexibility to change that? change that?
Yeah.
The deeds all printed at this point? I mean, I I would consider if they're printed at this point on this one, you know, it's like, okay, but but going forward.
Well, I don't know. Maybe it's again, one of those M G L things.
I will get your answer on that.
Okay, it's just I noticed that.
Fair enough.
Having to hold, you know, I mean, it it's it's all archaic language, I think.
Oh, it's quaint, I guess. But I could see where some people might not particularly like that.
I agree.
Only men could sign the deeds, Barney.
Changed the select men to the select board, so.
Yeah, we did.
I didn't. And I don't not, I just didn't mean to say that. I mean, it was changed.
Yes.
By the way, in that same vein, if you could, uh, on the proclamation for the Concord Carlisle Community Chest, if you could put my initial, middle initial is J, it's written there as S. So you just have that changed. I only noticed that we're talking about this.
So do you want motions or not for the deeds?
I would like to approve them and then we'll work to get them signed. If you're comfortable with that or we can.
That's good. I moved the select board vote to transfer land in the public burial ground at the Green Cemetery described as follows. Deed seven eighty eight lot D four hundred graves one and two to Larry and Robin Bearfield at one uh eleven twenty seven North Road, deed nine, seven ninety one, lot C twenty two, grave one to Andrew Booth, former residence of River Road, deed seven ninety, lot D four oh eight, graves one and two to Ronald and Gene Kemyek at ninety four Bingham Road.
Second. All right, any discussion?
There's one more.
I I know there's another motion, but this this motion has just been made.
Okay, sorry.
We have to vote on this one, then I'll make the second.
Okay, so uh any discussion? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote.
Arnold, I. No more.
Oh, yeah, I.
Read I.
Snell, I. Motion carries.
And I moved that the select board vote to accept the return of land in the public burial ground at Green Cemetery from Ronald and Gene Kemyek. Lot D two twenty one, grave one and two.
Second.
Okay, uh any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote.
Arnold, I.
Oh, yeah, I.
Read I.
Snell, I. The motion carries. All right, now on to the last item, which was just a uh liaison reports. Are there any? Did anyone want to bring up anything?
Um I was, yes, I do. Um I was at the planning board last night. Um one of the items of discussion was whether the town should purchase a piece of land on West Street that has come into the planning board for a conservation cluster. And um they didn't make any uh recommendation one way or the other, but they ensued a conversation about you know, recommending various pieces of land. I'm glad I brought my umbrella.
Happy it's raining.
This particular land is uh being offered to us by uh by the honor that, you know, the Rikenbachs uh for two.
Oh, so they are.
Yeah, but two million dollars.
What's the market?
Hard to tell because it it hasn't.
That's something we have to take up an executive or what?
We, no, I don't. Um I don't think yet. I I think then there was another piece of land that came up.
Donated, I thought.
No, they weren't. That's the, that was the whole point. Anyway, um the um Oh, shoot, I've lost, forgotten their name. Frizzell, the Frizzell property.
Beautiful property.
It's a beautiful property. It's number listed in uh as a number one priority in the um town open space and recreation.
It's right at the town forest.
It's right at the town forest. It um is not up for sale. Um but they just came in for to do an A and R. And this is one I think that we should talk to the planning board and ourselves about. Uh because it is on the list and it will come theoretically, you know, theoretically come up.
A and R is something not required.
Approval not required.
They want to do subdivide?
They have, they can five, five lot subdivision on it. Um which would totally spoil the property. It has a huge, I I actually did all the interior design on the house. So I I'm very familiar with the house. Um so it could be easily uh developed into a two family. Then they have a big barn. Um so right off the bat, you could have housing, could maintain the the street vista and you could get trails and access into the town forest. So I think this is one that we should be talking about.
So that room.
We didn't, I don't know. We might need an executive session to talk about.
I think you, yeah, I think that you want to take that in executive, but it does remind me of another uh topic that Madeline has raised that we should create, and I think it's related to that, we should create a Carlisle nonprofit. Right?
Well.
So that you could take.
CPC could take care of this. Yeah, CPC, because it would be open space, it would be housing, and it would be recreation. And it's got lots of money and it could help with all the stuff.
Okay, well.
We need to take it up. And it it came up at planning board, so that's why I am bringing it up. So the other meeting I was at the night before that was the uh housing production plan uh open forum, and that was very interesting. Um and we we are getting closer. It was quite a bit of unanimity uh and support for a lot of the recommendations that were presented. Um um and so uh I was hoping that more people.
We're gonna talk about that next meeting, right?
We will, but I was hoping more of you guys would have been at the forum.
I wasn't even aware of it.
I sent everybody. But that's okay. It's okay. We will have a presentation uh on the twenty seventh. But I hope I will try to get, you know, an advanced copy so that people will have a chance to read it before we do the presentation. That would be helpful. So we have a a fulsome.
Sure you get it in the.
I will try. I will try. Okay, so those are my two liaison.
Anybody else with a liaison or wanna?
Oh, yeah, I one, sorry. And this is the um ARPA fund. And it's sort of a liaison report to you, uh Travis, because we would like the uh the ARPA fund said they would like to encourage the M F C to not that, you know, to keep feeding us uh applications and we thought the library extra space um i- in the utility room project uh should be written up as an ARPA project.
Okay, I will bring that up at the next meeting.
I have fulfilled my obligation to the committee to get that message out.
Okay.
Okay.
So approval of the minutes and review of warrants, seeing if there are no other. Oh, did you have something else?
No, no, I I I'll make a motion on the minutes. I moved to approve the select board meeting minutes from August ninth of uh twenty twenty two. Um but I have um uh an edit for August twenty ninth, so I would like to make the most two motion.
Okay.
I made the motion for the August twenty nine, uh sorry, August ninth.
Second.
All right, any discussion?
Yeah, I have, sorry, a bunch of discussions. So I I sent a I sent a marked copy to Jen so that I don't have to plow through the minor things, but I think, and I'll segue here, taken as a pair, this is a confusing time period because um we had one town administrator for one of the meetings and another one for the other meeting.
Yeah.
And I think what I recommended and I recommend to the board here is a best practice. In addition, first of all, in addition to listing the participants from the select board, I think we should always note the town administrator, when he's here, that he participated in his role as town administrator, because he's integral to the I think that should always be upfront, first of all.
Okay.
Um the second thing is, uh and I remarked on this, um and there's a couple typos I'm not gonna bother with, but um uh bother this team with, but the town administrator's report, which is great now, is also a lot more personal
Yeah.
than we're used to, and it's in the first person. And I recommend that all the minutes be in the third person. So even though I don't want to discourage you, Ryan, from saying, I met with X, Y, and Z, and it was great and blah, blah, blah. Jen should say town administrator reported that he met with, et cetera, et cetera.
Couldn't it just say the town administrator gave his report, which is attached?
That's fine, too. We can do that.
Why why have all the stuff in the minute?
That's fine, too. But but there is one other piece to that, which is, and I like your idea, it's attached and the following motions. Because what happens is, in the middle of his dialogue, we moved something and then it jumps right back to the dialogue.
Yeah, no, I I think it's the town administrator gives us, which is attached, and then give the motions as a separate.
All right.
I agree.
So I've made a few remarks. Jen has them. She's acknowledged she has them. So I would, if you can amend the motion to say as edited, if anybody else has.
Actually, um I would like to see him again if we're gonna change him back.
So then maybe, well, that's for both of them. So Jen needs to redo them.
Okay.
Okay, yes, true. Uh and then I'll then, okay, so I had other for the other ones, you know, instead of saying destruction of the Greeno Barn funding, I thought we should say funding for the demolition of the Greeno Barn. Anyway, uh so I have a couple of things that. That's what I'm given.
Okay.
So on the since and a question.
Do we need to withdraw the motion then?
Yes, no motion. And I would like to um table these and see them next week or next meeting.
That's it. Okay.
Jen has these.
Um, well, we went a little over. Barney, do you have anything else to add?
I do not. I think we're, I agree with those suggestions about minutes and um, yeah, I think we're good to go.
Okay, the only thing I'd add at the end is that we, you're gonna send a list of to prioritize, maybe Barney, you could send that out, but to prioritize uh the boards. It'd be, you would ask for a a list of priorities from each of us so that you can kind of gauge and. So.
Do you want me to send it just a reminder email out to all?
That would be helpful. You're willing to do, but that was an action item, so.
Yep.
All doing it. All right.
These maps are not warrants for spending warrants.
You don't have to read them.
Yeah, we don't have to read them.
No, those warrants are just the review of the things that I signed.
When you read the when you read the agenda, uh you had said you were wondering why there were warrants on there because we don't have.
These are different kinds of. A payroll, the pay warrants.
Well, yeah.
So by statute, the select board has to sign any money that goes out.
Right.
We have the, you voted to have the chair sign them for you, but she has to present them or he has to present them to the board. So that's what that is.
Great.
It's confusing, because we use the warrants and two, we use warrants in two different contexts. And this is not town meeting warrants.
Assume that there's no question. You're right. At the beginning, I said that there aren't gonna be any. Thank you. Yep, no, I'm learning too. This is all part of the process. All right.
I just want to say, um Travis, thank you very much for for filling in and I'm happy to have you here anytime.
Well, all right, all right. Thank you. All right, do you have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Okay, great, bye.
Thank you all.